Good afternoon. This is a regular city commission meeting for the City of Largo for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you have a cellphone. Please turn it to silent or off so that we don't have any interruptions. We're going to start tonight's meeting with an invocation given by Pastor Matthew Trill from New Testament Baptist Church, and then if you could please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings. I thank you this afternoon for the blessings of living in this country. I thank you for what it affords us. Thank you for living in this community. We thank tonight of those that are protecting us, whether that's on our own streets here in Largo, whether that's in far places across the world, and their families that are at home as well. We ask for safety and protection. Father, you've told us that if we ask for wisdom when we lack it, that you'll give it to us. And so, we recognize our need, each of us, for wisdom in our daily life and the affairs that concern others, and I pray that you would bless us with that tonight, especially these who serve this community and these elected officials. I pray that you would give clarity of thought tonight. May there be good understanding, may there be a cause of right and for the good of the people that live here. We do ask for those that are in need tonight. We pray that you would provide those needs, but that you'd use us to do that, that you would put us in the places and the times that you want us to be, to be an influence for good, to be a help to those who have need, and use us as the vessel of goodness for those people in meeting their needs. I pray that again tonight might honor you, might encourage one another, that there would be a sense of harmony, peace, and understanding here. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We have one ceremonial item, just one, but it's a very exciting one, so we'll get moving on to that.
Whereas Largo native Anastasia Zolotik started training at U.S. Best Taekwondo Center at the early age of five years old, and by the age of eight had already earned her blue belt. And whereas in 2018, at the age of 16, while competing in the World Taekwondo Junior Championship, Anastasia won her first gold. And whereas after her successes in 2018, Anastasia and her family moved to Colorado Springs to train for the Olympic Games. And whereas Anastasia went on to qualify for the 2020 Tokyo Olympics with two bronze medals in the 2019 World Taekwondo Grand Prix. And whereas in 2021, Anastasia became the first American woman to win gold in Taekwondo at the 2020 Tokyo Olympic Games. And whereas the City of Largo is proud to be the hometown of Olympic champion Anastasia Zolotik and joins her in celebrating this outstanding achievement. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim this day, the 7th of September, to be Olympic Champion Anastasia Zolotik Day in the City of Largo, and encourage all residents to join in celebration of Anna's historic win.
Good evening, Commissioners, City Leadership, and Community Members. The silver lining of this year was the incredible successes of athletes at the Tokyo Olympics, representing a level of determination, skill, and true resilience by individuals from countries all around the globe. Despite a global pandemic and being postponed a year, the Olympics proceeded with new public health measures, and these athletes were able to compete for a medal many had worked their whole lives for. A particular highlight of this year was that the City of Largo was represented on the international stage with incredible, the incredible performance of Anastasia Zolotik, who became the first woman to win the gold medal in Taekwondo for Team USA. Community members across Largo and Tampa Bay remarked on her successes through our social media pages with comments such as, "Congratulations and bravo. Thank you for making our city a gold medal city. We are so proud to be represented by such an amazing athlete from our beautiful City of Largo. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication into your skill set. Bravo and congratulations on bringing home the gold. Congratulations, Anastasia. We are so happy for your amazing accomplishment. You're an incredible inspiration, the Beaman family. You have made your hometown so proud, and you are a hero to aspiring young girls all over. Congratulations, Dawn and Dorothy Parker. We are so very proud of you, Anastasia, and the example you have set for all of those watching in our City of Largo community. Praying for great things moving forward and all you will accomplish. Congratulations on winning gold. Congratulations, Anastasia, on making the Olympic history. You make Largo proud. Hope this is the first of many Olympic achievements." It is my honor and I am excited to introduce to you all Olympic gold medalist Anastasia Zolotik to share a few words with us this evening.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mary Brown for having me today and inviting my family and friends out to, you know, witness all this. And I'm very happy I'm from Largo. I mean, it's a small little city, and nobody really knows about it. Everybody knows Tampa and, you know, Orlando, and I'm very happy I got to put Largo out there. And I'm super happy and proud to be representing Largo, and it'll always be my hometown, and I probably won't be going anywhere. So it was, you know, I live in Colorado now, and that's where everybody calls home, but Largo will definitely always be my home, and I'm super happy that you guys, again, invited me out and gave me this opportunity. So, thank you.
You did get a picture with the whole commission of the court.
Mayor, can I, can I just say, you know, how proud I am for, for you to be, you know, representing Largo? As a kid who grew up here in Largo, it's very, extremely impressive, and I'm like a little kid over here meeting you. So, I just, I'm so excited about that. And to your family, I'm sure the hard work that you guys have had to put in, moving across the country and, you know, working with that, that type of training schedule has got to be hard for you guys, so thank you for that as well. And, yeah, I just want to say thank you for, for representing Largo so well. Thank you.
I'd like to point out that Sue Porter, who's here to get appointed to a board, is wearing her USA shirt. So she's got, she's the best dressed here. Congratulations. We hope to see you next, soon.
Yeah.
Yes.
Four more years.
Even sooner. Next, we'll have citizens comment. If you'd like to speak about something that's on the agenda outside of the consent docket, please wait until that item comes up. Do we have any cards this evening?
I have three cards. First is Mark Clutho.
Well, we escaped a big one. Idaho would have been a mess here. You know? That high pressure out there saved us. But just think of what you'd be dealing with now if it wasn't for that high pressure. So, let me repeat some headlines here. Climate Scientists Warned Us: When Will We Listen? Stark Warnings For The Warming Planet. UN Report Spells Out Dire Consequences Of Climate Change. Hotter Future Is Certain, UN Says, Urging Immediate Action To Ease Perils. A Hotter Future Is Now Inevitable, UN Report Says. Scientists Find Rapid Shift From Fossil Fuels Could Avert Greater Perils. Only Big Steps Will Save Earth. Melting Ice Impairs Nearly All Emperor Penguin Colonies. Earth's Carbon Dioxide Levels At Highest Level In Four Million Years. Get Ready For Climate Disasters. Adults Are Failing Us On Climate. Huge Change Is Needed To Keep Nature Earth Okay, Report Says. Well, you know, your plan for that new city hall isn't the huge change that's going to do it. You didn't do it with the library, or the community center, or the rec center. Not even close. You know, if you were playing a dart game, not only did you miss the dart, the bullseye, you didn't hit the board. You just won't get the science right. You won't get it right. Giving Aging Buildings A Green Makeover. Developers Are Devising Ways To Retrofit New York's Oldest Structures To Reduce Their Carbon Footprints. Retrofitting These Buildings, They're Cutting The Utility Bills 80%. Now, a new building, if you do it right, you're cutting the utility bill more than that, to zero, if you're utilizing renewable energy when you're constructing the building. But what I see with your plan for that new city hall, you're not getting there. Not close.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Denise, is it Tottle?
Hi, my name is Denise Tottle. It's my first time doing something like this, so forgive me if my format's not perfect, but I just wanted to bring attention to Second Avenue Southwest in Largo. It's the entrance way to, I guess they used to call it Bayhead, where they have the basketball courts, and there's a pond on the left side, but the street, where actually, it's, the court lights all go off, I guess, at 11 or 10. I guess they're timed. And it's so pitch black that literally, if you're outside in your front yard, and we have lights all over, that someone can walk down the street and just startle you because you don't even see them. It's like, super dark. So, I don't really know what the plans are for it. We're just asking maybe for two or three streetlights to make it a little safer. In the past, they had barbecue grills, and there were seats for people that would, you know, come and watch the skaters, and they had picnic areas, and more of the neighbors and the neighborhood used to utilize the area. And since then, what I was told when I called, they had to remove all of these things for some immediate complications with homeless and, you know, children gathering in this dark area, and, I don't know, they, I hate to say it, but just some complications. Normal kids' stuff may be a little worse, I'm not sure, but, so they took all of these, you know, fun things for families away, and I was told that they do plan on bringing them back, and we actually put picnic tables there ourselves. And I don't know if it was a mistake, but they were removed, and it was kind of accidental, but they planned on bringing them back. Well, they never came back. The street's very dark, and it seems, you know, common sense that when you have such a dark area, you know, people that would normally bring families and stuff would hang out, but in the darkness, it just seems to bring darkness, you know? So, I don't know what the plans are going for. I think it's just been overlooked. You know, there's been so much on the agenda, and I've called about it, and they say it's not our department, it's the parks. Other people say, like, we were told they had landscaping. It never hap, you know? So, if you guys can shed some light on it, I'd appreciate it.
Quite literally, we'll work on that. I, I do know that, I think it's in this coming fiscal year is, is a redesign of the Bayhead Activity Center, and we'll certainly make sure that we look at those aspects as that, as that happens, if not before.
Yeah.
But thank you very much, and you did great for your first time.
Thanks. Well, you know, they just made it the entrance to that park, so we get a lot of traffic that we never had, and it's very dark.
We'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Pat Byrne.
People in government sometimes forget that it's not their money. Taxpayers make huge investments in personnel, sometimes over decades. Any more than you would fill in a swimming pool that needed maintenance, you don't trash good people to serve personal ambitions. Taxpayers expect oversight of executive management, alerted to problems that you clearly were not aware of. You have an obligation to pursue those matters through thorough investigation. I appear tonight with a tale of two cities. With apologies to Dixon, Dickens, for this tale is true, not fiction. The version, as they say, is ripped from the headlines. The listener can decide how much faith to play in mere coincidence. Nothing I say is inaccessible to anyone with the internet. The inquiry requested of this commission for over a month would better serve everyone involved. Elmagordo's police chief accused Ms. Pollak of favoritism in management. A director here accused the same person of the same thing. Elmagordo's police chief was suspended by Ms. Pollak. Ms. Pollak fired a director here. Elmagordo's residents, hundreds of them, signed a petition demanding a vote of no confidence in Ms. Pollak and an independent investigation. Largo citizens have called for an investigation here. Elmagordo's police chief was reinstated. Ms. Pollak resigned. The chief resigned, but continued a lawsuit, obtained a settlement. Your director promised to take no legal action, has never asked for reinstatement, and has asked for nothing more besides an apology and an investigation. This Tale of Two Cities is unfinished in Largo. An employee's complaint has been ignored. Broader concerns, well-founded concerns about executive performance have been swept under the rug. Many viewers are incredulous that such an important story might add with, went, end without a conclusion. My aim tonight was to make clear that what you might find embarrassing is already out in the public. There's nothing more than embarrassing. There's only things that are more useful to you. It is helpful that the emotionalism associated with a bizarre personal event is dissipating. You can now focus your attention on the hidden truths motivating that event. Your duty to respond to all employee grievances and to examine all aspects of executive performance has not gone away. I'll be back on the 21st.
Thank you.
I did get one more card. Ted Morris.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Major Ted Morris. I'm the Director of the Salvation Army for Upper Pinellas County, and, which of course includes the Largo area. Many people know that the Salvation Army's a church. My wife and I are the co-pastors of the Salvation Army Church, who happens to be in Clearwater, and our mission statement, our international mission statement says this, "Our mission is to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ and to meet human needs in His name without discrimination." And so, if you come to our services, like any Protestant service you may be used to. You know, the global pandemic that we have is a new threat to stability of families that live here in the Largo area, many of them who live on the edge of poverty. And while many of us are able to return to our normal lives, whatever "normal" means, there's some people who are even more experiencing the chance of falling below the poverty line, and the worst example of that is being homelessness. The Salvation Army is in a position to try to alleviate that for people. Primarily what we do, we provide help with rent, help with utilities, and for those parents who have children at home that wish to move themselves out of the case of generational poverty, we have a program we call Pathway of Hope, which is an intensive case management program where our case managers walk alongside with them to help them meet their goals in moving in a direction against poverty. And then just parenthetically, we have representatives from, from the Clearwater area, from this North County area, who are right now serving in New Orleans at one of our mobile food trucks, serving about 1,000 meals a day. The Salvation Army's down there serving about 30,000 meals a day to those who are suffering in that area. So I'm simply here to let you know that we want to partner with you as you meet the needs of those living in the Largo area. Feel free to contact me at my office, because we're here to support you and come alongside you and partner with you as you help to make Largo an even better place to live and to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for all that y'all do here in Largo.
That's all the cards.
Next, I will ask the commission, if you probably have noticed that Commissioner Finger is joining us from home, so we have to get consensus from the City Commission to allow a commissioner to, to join us virtually in this case.
And move approval.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next, we'll have approval of the agenda.
I'd like to pull item 11, please.
Item 11 pulled.
Oh, second, sorry.
I just need a motion.
I'll move to approve in a few seconds.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 17th, 2021.
Not to be picky, Un, but in the minutes, under the section of the minutes of the previous meeting, there was a discussion, and, and the sentence says, "Commissioner with no name asked that a sentence on page 11 be removed," blah, blah, blah. That would be Commissioner Gerard, and, not that I want all the recognition, but somebody might wonder which commissioner that was, so...
Excellent. What page on the, on the minutes is that?
Well, it's page eight of 155 in the packet, and page two, I believe, of the minutes.
Very good. So we're going to add Commissioner Gerard, and then I would request a motion to approve the minutes, amend and approve the minutes.
So moves.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item four, reappointment of Vice Mayor James Robinson to the Pinellas Sun Coast Transit Authority Board of Directors for the term which will expire on September 30th, 2024. Item five, reappointment of Commissioner Michael Smith to the Ford Pinellas Board for the term which will expire on September 30th, 2025. Item six, appointment of Sue Porter as a member of the Recreation Parks and Arts Advocacy Board. Item seven, appointment of Mary Rivera Martin as a member of the Personnel Advisory Board. Item eight, authorization for additional fiscal year 2021 spending for miscellaneous manhole rehabilitation in accordance with bid number 19-B-687 in the estimated amount of $85,000. Item nine, approval of assignment of the contract to provide professional services to the City of Largo in accordance with RFQ number 19-Q-666 to Holf Associates Incorporated. Item 10, approval of scope and fee for design services to replace West Bay Drive sanitary sewer assets by Holf Associates Incorporated in the amount of $298,920 in accordance with professional services agreement, RFQ number 19-Q-666. Item 12, authorization to purchase computer equipment, peripherals, and related services from CDWG in accordance with Sourcewell Contract Number 081419, CDW, in the amount of $591,000 contingent upon adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget. Item 13, authorization to purchase computer equipment, peripherals, and related services from Dell Marketing LP in accordance with state contract number 43211500-WSCA15ACS in the estimated amount of $160,000. Item 14, award of RFP number 21-P-724 Audit Services to Car, Riggs &amp; Ingram LLC in the amount of $373,200 for a term of five years.
Thank you. You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion and including staff background provided in the commission packets.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. I would like to note once again, Ms. Sue Porter is with us tonight, who was appointed as a member of the Recreation Parks and Arts Advisory Board. Thank you for, for your service. And also, appointment of Mary Rivera Martin. I'm not sure if she is here today, but thank, I'd like to thank her as well for her dedication to the Personnel Advisory Board. Item number 11.
Tracy's not with you tonight, is he?
No, he's out of town today.
Okay, I, I just wanted to take a minute, just a minute, because I was looking for an opportunity to discuss kids on playgrounds. Again, we haven't done that for a while. But, as I looked at this consent item, I just wanted to take a minute to, to thank you and to thank Tracy specifically for seeing a need and figuring out a way to, to bring us funding to help, you know, solve our problem. And I just think it's important to recognize your office, all that you guys do, but also the fact that we had a city employee from another department in the city who saw an opportunity to, to solve a problem and, and did so. So, for anybody that's not aware of the item I'm talking about, Mr. Schofield has found a way to, to bring us $50,000 to help find a place in Largo Central Park for teens to gather, and he watched the deliberations up here. I've spoken to him several times about it, and I just really applaud his efforts to, to come here and fix things. So, I didn't bring you up here to pick it apart for you. I think it's great. Fantastic.
No, we appreciate it as well, from your perspective and from Mr. Schofield's.
So, that's all I had.
Thank you.
And I would, I would...
I got it real quick, because, again, we love talking about this so much, but in all seriousness, as the liaison to the Youth Leadership Council, we had a, a couple members of Parks and Rec, Taylor Connors, as well as Jennifer Fawcett, come and meet with the Largo, the Youth Leadership Council last week, last Wednesday, and we spent about an hour, over an hour, going over all the different options of, and our, the greatest thing about it is they are absolutely allowing the teens to, to design and kind of, you know, within the budget, what this area should look like. So, the hope, obviously, is that it's going to be a functionable, usable area to, to do and solve the problem that, that, that we're seeing out there. So, just a huge thank you to the staff and, and the charity organization that was able to, to provide the funds to the city to do this. I think it's, it's a fantastic end result for a lot of work that was done here, as well as with, with Parks and Police, so, great job by everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I'll keep it brief, because we've gone over this a million times, but I did want to point out that the, the organization that is providing this funding is the, funding is the Police and Kids Foundation, and Tracy's the president of that, but I want to thank the foundation as a whole for this very generous donation for something that I think is going to do a lot of good, and, and that's it. Thank you.
Great. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve authorization to accept funding in the estimated amount of $50,000 from the Police and Kids Foundation Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number 15.
Just when you thought it was going to get easy.
Next is item number 15.
Just when you thought it was going to get easy.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the first reading of ordinance 2021-73, which will establish a property tax rate for fiscal year 2022. The official property value estimates were released by the Pinellas County Property Appraiser on July 1, 2021. These values provide the basis of total property tax revenue into the General Fund and Community Redevelopment Agency Fund and are used to establish our property tax rate. For fiscal year 2022, the property values have increased a total of 8.13% over the current year. This 8.13%, of course, represents an average increase. Individual changes in taxable value may vary based on a number of factors, including one, a property is homesteaded. In such case, the value increase is based on the Consumer Price Index, or the CPI, which is 1.4% for fiscal year 2022. Other factors may be how recently a property has sold and whether the value has reset, or there was a portable homestead that brought along with the purchase. And then finally, whether or not a property is commercial. And if so, then they're subject to a maximum of 10% increase in property value. In your agenda packet, there's a chart that provides an impact analysis on examples of both commercial and average residential properties. Regarding the proposed budget, the city manager's proposed budget included a general fund projection that left the property tax rate unchanged at the current rate of 5.6200 mils. This will fund a number of strategic priorities, which will be outlined in our next agenda item, adopting a tentative budget. The current rate of 5.62 mils would be advertised as a 6.97% tax increase and provide a total revenue increase of 8.5%. The difference in those two percentages being the amount of growth and values based on new construction and annexation as allowed by state statute. We did provide a number of tax rate alternatives in your agenda packet. I also have a slide, Brandon could turn it on for me here. A slide of tax rate alternatives. There we go, thank you, Brandon. This is also provided for you in your agenda packet. At the August budget work session, the commission requested a rate that would represent a decrease in revenue equal to the revenue adjustment that we included for sales tax and the general fund. This is about a $250,000 increase in sales tax revenue. So we did calculate a flat rate of 5.58 mils, which results in approximately $250,000 less in property tax revenue. The impacts of all the rates on the average taxpayer, as well as the ending general fund balance is included in your packet. If you could go to the next slide, please. The slide here shows the impact of maintaining the current rate of 5.62 mils on the ending fund balance over the five-year planning period. Of course, this does show that the ending fund balance still does not yet return to our target of 20%. Next slide, please. Finally, knowing that the property tax revenue is not the only source of funding for city services, this chart provides the aggregate impact of all planned revenue increases for FY '22. The city commission has already adopted both the solid waste and wastewater rate increases of 10%. The tax rate is the final rate consideration for next year's budget. Next slide, please. The final request from the city commission at the August work session was to engage the community further on the impacts of the proposed property tax rate. The Office of Performance and Budget worked with Communications and Engagement to build off the initial community engagement efforts and seek specific input on the tax rate. I'm going to turn it over to Will Payne, our Performance and Budget Manager, so he can review the results for us. Do you want to do it there?
Brandon, I don't know if you're able to put the webpage up on display for us here. So following the work session, the commission asked that we do some additional engagement on the proposed property tax rates. So in partnership with Communications and Engagement, we used a survey entertaining both of the property tax rates discussed at the work session. That was both maintaining the current rate of 5.62 or going to an alternative reduced rate of 5.58. You can find this information on largo.com/financialcenter. It's a new third page on our budget engagement feedback, so it's there and available. We asked folks to self identify whether they were residents of Largo, as well as their zip codes, which was optional. So this is all based on folks identifying as Largo residents. We also included the responses for fully support and somewhat support in the support bucket there, and those who responded strongly opposed or somewhat opposed in that opposed bucket. You can see that we had a relatively even split between the different options. I will note that in some of these as well, folks may have said they support maintaining the current rate and that they may also support reducing the current rate. So there's not exactly a one for one, one for one translation there. And we certainly learned some lessons for our survey next year. We did also ask for open comments, if anyone had suggestions about why they made the selection they did, or any additional information for us. Some comments from those who supported maintaining the current rate included things like "Largo has done a great job investing in the community, residents can see the improvements, living in Largo is a great value with excellent services", and/or they liked the budgeted recommendations in the proposed budget and support that through their taxes. We did include in the survey a link to the proposed budget to try and use it as an educational opportunity as well. Comments from those who opposed maintaining the current rate included things like residents and landlords are still recovering from the pandemic. The city, like individuals, needs to find ways to live within its means and find things to cut in the budget rather than raise taxes. And/or that they are a single individual who maybe doesn't use a lot of services that their taxes pay for. So we received feedback across the board and responses across the board in hopes that that can provide some additional information for your decision tonight.
Hey, thank you, Will. So in closing, our tax rate ordinance tonight is prepared with the current rate of 5.6200 mils. Should a different rate be proposed, the city clerk will need to read aloud both the rate and the percentage tax increase in order for the public hearing to comply with state requirements. And other than that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2021-73, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, establishing the property tax rate for the City of Largo for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, at 5.6200 mils, 6.97% higher than the rolled back rate of 5.2536 mils, providing an effective date.
Thank you, do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
Commissioner Smith.
Hi, yes, I love the setup y'all did. That was a good setup for next year. I'd really like to see how we can more engage people in that. I also appreciate staff at the work session. When I asked maybe for a smaller millage rate, I like that you included that with the residents to see what their view was. So I look forward to maybe using this, like I said, in the future for more outreach and hopefully by that time we'll be a little bit more out and engage with people where we can get their input face to face. So I thank staff for including that in there, thank you.
Thank you, I think the graphs really tell the story that the folks, at least the folks that responded to the survey are pretty happy with how the city is spending the money that they pay for their property taxes. I will say, as Commissioner Smith alluded to, I'd like to see that number come down just a little bit. I think that 250,000 that we've seen in increased revenue somewhere else might be a good millage rate to settle on, but certainly we can have that discussion. Commissioner Gerard.
Thank you. I understand the desire to maybe come in with a slightly lower millage rate than the one that was recommended by the city manager. However, that would also require us to review services and items that the city was planning on to serve our citizens. We would have to then decide what we were going to cut from the budget. And I think at this point, you know, whereas it might not be very popular, but if we stayed with, you know, with the recommended millage, we would be able to provide the services that are included in the budget now and also get on a better path toward achieving that fund balance that, you know, that is being put out further and further. I think we need to get back to that fund balance. And if we just take a look at the things that are going on around the country, you know, there are disasters that we've been lucky and dodged for a while, but we need to be ready for that. And if we don't build that fund balance back up, we might be caught short. As a matter of fact, it was used, you know, during 2020 to compensate for the loss in revenue so we could continue to maintain the services that we're delivering to the city. So basically, we're at 5.620, we would, you know, be catching back up with what we've already spent and then get back on the path toward 20%. So I know that there's a desire and such, but the bottom line of what, the bottom line for a residential property here is not that much different. And for those dollars, we could maintain, we could keep the city in good shape and continue to provide the services that so many people appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to mention that there was some discussion about moving to that 5.58, and it could be done without cutting anything from the proposed budget. There would be a small change in the fund balance. As you know, we have a goal of 20% fund balance, which is a healthy goal. I fought for that goal and I think it's a good goal to have. But we also have a plan. And when we look at forward years with this budget, it looks at a 6% increase. And that's the way last year's budget was written, with the proposed 6% increase this year. So that plan is something that I think we should also consider when we're considering the new millage rate. So and that's part of the main reason that I feel like we should move a little bit closer to that 6%. I forget the exact number, but it's well above 6%, especially when you consider increase in property values due to redevelopment and annexation. I don't think the goal includes that, at least in my mind. It's kind of, I don't necessarily include annexation and new development in that goal, but we're well above it. I see a lot of construction going on in Largo. I don't think that we're going to have much of a challenge in the future as far as increased revenue from new development. We're seeing it, a lot of people investing in our city. So I think it's well worth it to give our taxpayers a little bit of a break this year because we can, without cutting any service at all. And with two things in mind, it's been a tough year for folks. Our goal has been 6% tax increase moving forward, and this would be within that goal. And we'd still, either way, we're not going to reach a 20% fund balance next year. So we'd still be okay, I think. Commissioner Robinson, Vice Mayor, sorry.
Either one. So I agree with a lot of your comments. But, you know, when we're talking, I also agree with Commissioner Gerard's comments when we start talking about the goal of our 20% fund balance. And, you know, we were pretty close to that coming into this year. And obviously, you know, we had to use some of that to get us through COVID and some of the issues that we worked on in the last couple of years. So, you know, I think it's a very legitimate concern to be worried about what happens if we do, you know, have some sort of a natural disaster or some other type of, you know, disaster that happens in the city, and how do we get through that? Now, I don't know if 15, you know, I think this year if we went with the 5.62, we'd be at 15% fund balance. In our out years, we're up to 17.7, you know, in 2026. I don't, you know, there's no way to figure out what that impact would be, you know, without knowing what that disaster is. But having that little bit of extra fund balances could make a lot of a difference in being able to get back to where we need to be in order to provide the services we, just basic services after a large natural disaster. So, you know, it's definitely, I guess this is the reason why we get paid the big bucks, right? So I can understand a lot of the concerns for the residents of Largo and some of the issues that they've had to deal with in the past year as well. When you look at that though, you know, I think Mary showed a slide earlier, the aggregate impact of some of the increases in wastewater, stormwater. At the 5.62 rate, I believe that was $78 for the average aggregate impact on a resident for the city of Largo. Which for, you know, for a lot of us up here, that's probably, you probably wouldn't notice that. I probably never won't notice it, but I mean, you know, I can assure you that there are folks that would. That $78 can, you know, makes a lot of a difference, even if it's spread out over a year's time. So, yeah, I mean, it's definitely going to be a tough decision this year, looking at this. But, you know, I think looking out, and I think where I'm kind of leaning is looking out in these out years, what is the impact going to be if we ever do or when, you know, we run into some sort of disaster where we're going to have to start really getting into these reserve funds? And are they going to be there? And is the amount of money we're going to need to be there available? So, I don't know, that probably wasn't a question or anything that nobody else up here thought about over the last 30 minutes. So I thought I'd say that out loud.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, actually, Mary, I was going to ask to see that slide that Vice Mayor Robinson was just talking about, showing the.
The aggregate impact?
Yes.
Yes. Brandon, could you put slide five up, please? Thank you.
Yeah, just to get those exact amounts. So my feeling is with those increases in solid waste and the wastewater increases, to go with the lower amount, I think is more fair to the citizens since we are having those increases this year. I think we've done, as the mayor said, you know, we're still looking at 6% either way. You know, we're, mayor may not make that. So in fairness to our citizens, I'm leaning more towards the lower rate of, is it the 55, 5.58?
Yes, the 5.58.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm leaning more towards that one in favor of our citizens. It's not, I mean, it's not huge, but it's, you know, every little bit counts and makes a difference in people's lives right now. So that's just, that's where I kind of stand right now, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
Yeah, I have to agree with the comments that have been made up here. I came here tonight prepared to fully support 5.62. You know, to ask that rhetorical mathematical question, what's the difference between that and 5.58? But I'm not going to make you do that. But it's not a, we're not talking about a huge gap here. I mean, as I do every year, I brought my trim notice. It's a $14 difference from last year to this year at my house. But I'm not, I don't have everybody's house, and I don't have a business, and I don't have a rental property. So I understand the other impacts along, and the aggregate of these other property increases. I think what we'd be demonstrating, if we did something other than what we were given as a recommendation, we'd be demonstrating how seriously we take this and that we're willing to debate, even if in the overall scheme of things, it's not a lot of dollars and cents here, it's more of a mindset of what we're prepared to do. Because we are, by virtue of the fact we're on this commission, we're all property owners in the city as well. And what we do, what decisions we make impact us and our families and, you know, people we know. So we take this very seriously. But I'm prepared to support the 5.62, but I'm not going to, you know, have a fit if we go to 5.58. I mean, it's just, to me, it's not that big of a gap.
Thank you. Commissioner Hulk.
I just wanted to ask one more question. So with the amount of houses that are being bought and sold right now in this area, that makes a big difference too, as far as property tax and the amount of money that ends up coming into the city throughout the year too, correct?
The short answer is it can. So these are all of the activities on our tax base that happened as of December 31, 2020. So everything that's happened since then will count on next year's tax rule. But, you know, there have been several state statutes that have further impacted property tax collection and property values. So most recently, the homestead portability allowance was passed so that if you have a homestead in. homestead in one location, you can port it over to your new location within certain dollar limits. So that does further restrict the impact of that. But typically, yes, when a house sells, the value can reset up to the market value, but it's not unfortunately that straightforward.
I know there's no way to totally project that, because I know that the houses, the market is going to fluctuate a lot. But I, just watching in my neighborhood, I've like been amazed at, you know, people who have lived in their houses for 30 years now are selling, you know, their house for three, four times what they paid for. So I know that there's a huge impact and change in what the property tax ends up being after the fact. So, but I also know that there's no way of projecting any of that.
Yeah, we used to do that. We used to try and project the change in values. It just is too complicated. There's really no way to do it. So we just project a change in property tax revenue, and we've been holding at that 6% for a few years, which could be achieved through a rate increase, a decrease, change in property values, all sorts of different mechanisms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd like, there was a mention of the, both the solid waste and the wastewater increases this year, and I'd like to say that those increases are increases that we needed to do to maintain the level of service that we provide to our residents. The difference between 5.58 and 5.62 is not required for us to maintain the level of service that we give to our residences. And in light of the fact that we increased both of those other two, it kind of really supports my, I mean, it makes me want to give some type of break if we can, if we can continue to provide the services that we have and our residents appreciate, and yet give a little bit of a reduction. It's not much. It's small compared to those other increases. But I think it's, it would go a long way. Commissioner Fenger.
Thank you. I was just going to say that I agree with much of what Commissioner Gerard had said earlier, and in supporting the 5.62 for the purpose of continuing to head to our goal of 20% reserves. And in the sense that I heard the word fairness talked about a lot, and I think we are still being fair to everyone in the city because we want to ensure we have funds to pull from should we have any of the items that, you know, we discussed, COVID or hurricane or whatever should happen along the way. So I still think it's fair and, you know, the right thing to do to continue to build towards that fund. And I know you said it's, neither one of them are going to get us there, but we're still on that track of really pushing to get there. So either, you know, either way, I think it's fair that we're helping. We're looking, we're looking ahead, and we're preparing if we need it, should we need it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I move to amend ordinance number 2021-73, establishing a tax rate for FY 2022 at the rate of 5.5800. Mills.
Second public hearing.
I have a motion.
Do I have to have the amend first?
That was for the, that was to amend it to a different number, is that correct?
That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
And there was a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sorry, real quick. What was the number, 5.58?
5.5800.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other discussion. Could you pull the board, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fenger?
No.
Commissioner Gerard?
No.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hulk?
Yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. So that was to amend the ordinance. Do you have to read the ordinance?
Yes.
I believe I heard that earlier on. I was paying attention.
I don't have the percentage.
It's 6.21%.
6.21, okay.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2021-73, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, establishing the property tax rate for the City of Largo for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, at 5.5800 mils, 6.21% higher than the rolled-back rate of 5.2536 mils, providing an effective date.
Thank you. So at this point, could you, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-73, establishing a tax rate for fiscal year 2022 at the rate of 5.5800 mils, and schedule the second public hearing and adoption on September 23rd, 2022 at 6:00 PM.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could you pull the board, please?
Commissioner Fenger?
No.
Commissioner Gerard?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hulk?
Yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Next up is item number 16.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Following the adoption of the Tax Rate Resolution 2303, is adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, which begins on October 1st. To recap the process of how we got here, it began many months ago, back in January, at the City Commission's annual retreat discussing strategic issues and direction for the city. Staff began working on proposals and evaluating budgets throughout the course of the spring, lots of collaboration and budget review happening over the course of many months. That led to the proposed budget released on July 1st. We had the first work session between the City Commission and the Finance Advisory Board on July 9th, and a subsequent Finance Advisory Board meeting to review and discuss the direction from the City Commission and the recommendations outlined as part of the Finance Advisory Board's purview. At the August 10th work session, the City Commission reviewed the recommendations from the Finance Advisory Board, as well as received the reconciliation list, which are those changes from the proposed budget that will be included in this adopted budget. We also conducted outreach engagement following the release of the proposed budget, which was discussed at the August 10th work session. We conducted pop-up, in-person budget engagement at locations around the city, including Largo Central Park, our rec centers, the library, and area grocery store. We conducted online engagement as well for those that we couldn't reach in person, and used our Balancing Act engagement tool to solicit feedback on the proposed budget. All of that feedback was compiled and was reviewed at the work session and is still available on the largo.com/financialcenter webpage. The tentative budget, as outlined here, is the result of a long and collaborative process designed to advance the goals laid out in the city's strategic plan. When the budget is, the budget totals $262,440,000, including those items rebudgeted from FY 2021. One note, that when the budget is advertised in the newspaper, it's going to advertise the change in all funds expenditures in this budget. And that number's going to look particularly high this year, as you saw in the all-fund summary in the budget. And that's because the City Hall Capital Project, which is a very large capital project, including the Parks Building borrowing, is going to total about $60 million, is showing up in the budget for the first time this year. So we have a one-time, very large capital expenditure this year that's making that change from the prior year look substantially different than it otherwise would. The general fund expenditures in this budget total $96,939,500, and there is a total FTE, or full-time equivalent employee, change of 10.98 additional FTEs. Major initiatives included in the proposed budget include continued investment in sustainability and the resilience of our community, such as an update of the Largo Environmental Action Plan, the Clearwater Largo Road Redevelopment Plan, and technology and cybersecurity investments. Our investments in infrastructure continue with funding for a stormwater asset inventory, additional funding for stormwater conveyance system improvements, and other repair and maintenance activities for our stormwater infrastructure. And the realm of public health and safety, we'll see the addition of three police officers, a police-public engagement and information position, and the implementation of body-worn cameras, and the staff to support that program. And finally, for our many community amenities that residents enjoy, we'll see investments in the Southwest Pool and the Central Park Performing Arts Center, as well as continued beautification in the downtown area. Since the last meeting, included in those budget totals are the items from the reconciliation list, along with a few final changes that were included in the memo and attached on the reconciliation list with your packet. As we discussed in August, but had not included, those totals include funding for the solid waste driver pay adjustments, additional funding in staffing hours for the Southwest Pool, the annual audit cost that was approved by the Commission on this evening's consent docket. There is also the replacement of a planning technician position with a planer-one position, and additional funding to support the award of the 20th Street Northwest Project early next year. In addition to the alternative tax rates that were requested from the work session, the Commission also requested a list of items in the budget that could be discussed to offset service or fund balance goals, and we've attached that list of the strategic investments in this year's budget. And with that, staff is available for any questions on the tentative budget.
Resolution number 2303, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, adopting a tentative annual operating and capital improvements budget for the City of Largo for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I'm very pleased with the add delete for the planning one. I think that's something we need to, as a city, start looking into. They're getting really busy down there, and it's a good thing for our city that people are wanting businesses going and people are wanting to come here. But if we want to stay competitive, we have to be able to get these plans done, so I'm very happy with that and hope we take that into consideration in future budgets, if this is the way the city's looking at going. So, thank you on that one.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I move to approve Resolution number 2303.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say, this seems like a relatively short discussion, but we have been talking about this for about nine months, and talking with our residents amongst ourselves, with staff, and it's been a very, very long and long process, and mostly on your end, probably not as much on our end, but I appreciate all the hard work, and it's a great product, and I'm looking forward to the next year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up is ordinance number 2021-65.
Ordinance 2021-65 is the second reading of a budget amendment amending the FY 2021 budget in the amount of $828,000 within the Community Development Department CDBG Fund. This was passed on first reading, and there have been no changes since first reading. Staffs available for questions.
Ordinance number 2021-65, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget adopted by Resolution number 2279, by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of $828,000 within the Community Development Department, Community Development Block Rent Fund, for additional program expenditures, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-65 on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is number 18.
Yes, number 18 is a second reading of ordinance 2021-67. This is a budget amendment amending FY 21 budget in the amount of $50,000 within the local option sales tax fund within the Engineering Services Department for Stormwater. There were no changes from first reading. It passed on first reading. Included in the memo was also an update from the Engineering Department on the status of that project, just to share that information, and staff's available for any questions.
Ordinance number 2021-67, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget adopted by Resolution number 2279, by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of $50,000 within the Engineering Services Department Local Option Sales Tax Fund for stormwater pipe repair, providing for an effective date.
Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-67 on second and final reading.
Second.
I know this isn't to you, Will, necessarily, but I appreciate the work that the staff did to make that area look secure and look nice. When I heard that it was going to be a year, a year and a half before we were able to fix that, I really was worried that there was going to be 75 barricades down there for a year or two, year and a half, and there's businesses around there. So thank you to those folks that shored that up for us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is item number 19.
Item number 19 is the second reading of a budget amendment within the Human Resources Department Risk Services Fund, in the amount of $120,000 for the FY 2021 budget. Again, there were no changes from first reading. And staff's available for questions.
Ordinance number 2021-69, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget adopted by Resolution number 2279, by appropriating expenditures in the amount of $120,000 within the Human Resources Risk Services Fund budget, providing an effective date.
Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-69 on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is number 20.
All right. This is the second reading of ordinance 2021-70, a budget amendment in the amount of $700,000 in the IT Department's Enterprise Technology Capital Fund for the FY 21 budget. There were no changes from first reading, and staff's available for questions.
Ordinance number 2021-70, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget adopted by Resolution 2279, by appropriating expenditures in the amount of $700,000 within the Information Technology Department Enterprise Technology Capital Projects Fund budget, providing an effective date.
Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions from the Commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-70 on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next up is item number 21.
Good evening, honorable City Commissioners. This is the second reading for Resolution number 2300. No changes were made to the resolution, which was approved at first reading on August 17th. All requirements were met, including an advertisement in the Tampa Bay Times for Wednesday, August 25th, and a posted notice on the property. Staff is available to answer questions at this time.
Resolution number 2300, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, designating a new State of Florida brownfield area in the City of Largo, established in accordance with Sections 166.041 and 376.77 through 376.85 Florida statutes, on properties located north of Mears Court, east of 62nd Street North, south of 150th Avenue North, and west of Sunset Street, within Section 5 Township 30 South, Range 16 East, Pinellas County, Florida, for the purposes of environmental remediation, rehabilitation, and economic development, providing for notice to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of said designation, providing that this designation shall not obligate the city to pay any costs except those attributed to the city's involvement as administrator of the brownfield area remediation and rehabilitation program, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
I had a question. With all the public outreach that we did, did we get any comments or questions from the public with the signage and all that?
No.
Okay.
We have a, we had one question interested in what the future tenant will be, and we informed them at the time when we received the site plan review, we'll go ahead and be happy to share that information with them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
And that was actually the question I was going to ask.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 I like that, we think. But on, tie onto that, where does this stand for the citizens at home from this point forward? Where will this go next for that citizen at home may be watching?
Sure. So if the City Commission adopts the resolution for a second reading, the next step in the process is, staff and the city will send a letter to the DEP, which is the Department of Environmental Protection, at the state level, informing them of the new brownfield designation, and then the developer, the property owner entering into that agreement will have to also submit and enter into negotiations for a BISRA, which is called a brownfield site remediation agreement.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Gerard?
I just want to clarify that this brownfield designation, just for the folks at home, these properties aren't, there's no great fear that there's toxic chemicals there. This is mostly building materials that may have been covered and such, but I know you're going to look for everything, but nobody should be concerned that, you know, we're poisoning the water or anything. Is that correct?
We have the representative for the developer here who can be able to speak about that. Thank you.
Rigger Lamphier, Terricon Consulting.
Rigger Lamphier, Terricon Consulting. Regarding the contamination that's present on site, it is mainly attributed to any construction or building materials that were brought in as fill material when the site was brought up to grade. There have been ongoing discussions with the Department of Environmental Protection, Southwest District, and we have all but satisfied one condition regarding site assessment activities before the implementation of any remedial action. They would like us to complete one additional monitoring well. There are four currently on the property. There were seven temporary monitoring wells, testing for all recognized environmental conditions, none of which have expressed any concern for any recognized environmental conditions, contaminants of concern in the groundwater. Contamination is only present in soil and is attributed to the construction demolition materials that were used as fill material.
Thanks very much. I just wanted to set folks' minds at ease that we're looking at something from construction materials, nothing from any kind of toxic waste.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve Resolution number 2300 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Next up is item number 22.
Good evening. This will be a second reading of ordinance number 2021-51, amending Chapter 5 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances to provide regulations for the commercial sale of dogs and cats within city limits. Changes from the first reading on August 3rd, 2021, as amended at the first reading, Section 2 CA Grandfathering was amended to read in part, notwithstanding the foregoing. New or additional pet store shall not include an existing pet store in operation on the effective date of this article that has sold its corporation, store, or other corporate assets to another pet store, corporation, or operator so long as the purchaser or operator continues uninterrupted operation in the same location. The previous action was approved on first reading with the above revisions on August 3rd, 2021, by a vote of six-zero, with Mayor Brown being absent. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2021-51, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 5 to enact regulations for the commercial sale of dogs and cats within the city, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
Yes, I have four cards. First is Rosales Socaro. I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
Hello, my name is Rosales Socaro, and I am the manager at All About Puppies, and I can assure you all that my staff and I are going to uphold this ordinance, and we are very excited to work alongside the City of Largo and promote the good characters in the industry. We strive to continue to be an establishment that the citizens can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Alexandria Julian.
I feel like we're all getting to know each other. Hi, I'm Alexandria Julian. So our family has been advocating across the state for a few years now, educating officials like yourselves on this industry and kind of the things that are, that go along within it. We are very proud about how the place our small family business calls home has handled this ordinance, is well researched, thought out, and debated, and if passed tonight, this ordinance is another step in the right direction for a continuously evolving industry. We are happy to announce that since receiving the final draft, we have worked to attain all the documents that are required, and we are in compliance. So as a family business and as animal advocates, we are in full support of this ordinance, and thank you for your time and dedication. We are really proud to be a part of this city. Thanks.
Next speaker is Sherri Strakowski.
Mayor, Commissioners, we would just urge you to just say no to pet stores selling puppies from breeders. No responsible breeder would ever allow a pet store to sell their dogs. This is the absolute base level of what should be done. Just say no to puppy mills and backyard breeders, and they certainly should come nowhere near pet stores. For those people who only want purebred puppies, purebreds are puppies, purebreds are being killed, puppies are being killed, because pet stores are allowed to sell them instead of promoting homes for rescues. You can get a purebred dog from a rescue, excuse me, and you can get a purebred dog from a responsible breeder. And the next thing to vote on is that pet stores in Florida, excuse me, should only be allowed to adopt out rescue dogs. And thank you for those of you who support this.
Thank you.
Oh, there's one other thing I wanted to say.
I'm not really prepared for this because I had a developer help me write my letter about the 800 development property, but I would like to say to you that there was one thing that one of the gentlemen said at the meeting the other night, and he said, "It's all about the money." Well, it's not all about the money. This is not an affluent area. These are hard.
Are you talking about, are you still talking, are you talking about the 800?
I switched over to 800.
Yeah, we can only talk about this particular subject at this point.
Oh.
Just about this ordinance we're talking about right now.
Oh, because I thought I saw when I was reading up on this that if you put it on, that you were allowed to.
At the very beginning of the meeting, you could talk about anything that is related to city business, but after, after that point, you can only talk about the item that is on, that we're talking about right now.
At the end.
But certainly, send an email, and we will certainly all read it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mary Strakowski.
Can I take this down?
Sure.
Okay, sounds really sweet about the family-owned business where they're actually caring about the puppies. Three million animals are euthanized in U.S. shelters every year, while 2 million puppies are produced by puppy mills annually. Backyard breeders who sell their puppies to pet stores are just about the same thing as a puppy mill. If puppy mills didn't exist, there would be 75% fewer dogs in shelters. Like my sister said there, puppies and purebreds are put down every day in shelters. Even Pasco County, for heaven's sake, developed the ordinance to sell only rescue dogs in the pet stores, so that way it's a win-win. They can still make their money off of the sale of animals, but then they can rescue them so they're not put down, because for every puppy that's purchased in a puppy mill store, that's a sweet shelter dog, that's having to be put down. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I don't want to kill this, or not kill, I bring this along along very, much longer. I think I've made my point that I'm against the, this ordinance completely. I did want to mainly make a point that it says six-zero. I believe I was a no on that one. I don't think I've ever voted in favor of this moving forward at all, so I think there needs to be a correction or I missed that somewhere. Also, I would also be curious, maybe, maybe in the city manager report, if I could see kind of statistic of how many times our officers have had to report to those locations, all of them in Largo, and where we stand on outstanding cases of theft that has happened in those locations. I'm curious of that, just if it could be just included as a footnote in the city manager thing, but mainly I wanted to speak that I was a no, so that that needs a correction completely, and I'm for adoption base.
And I, that was my recollection as well. I was going to ask the same question. I wasn't at that meeting, but I, I watched it, the entire thing. It was a long meeting, but I believe that it was five-one that that passed. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. So again, I'm just going to, you know, reiterate my statement I believe I made at the last meeting. There's obviously been a lot of conversation about this over the last several months, and I think the ordinance that we have in front of us now is the ordinance that the majority of, the consensus of this commission was to bring to us. So thank you for you, all the work that everybody in your department has done for this. When it comes to, you know, the discussion of whether it's better to purchase a dog or adopt a dog, whatever that discussion is, I just got a dog a couple weeks ago, and we adopted a dog. That was our choice. I don't believe, having been in the pet industry for the majority of my career, that it's, that we, this organization, this commission should be making that decision for anybody. I, to some of the comments that were made up here earlier, you know, the numbers that were tossed around, I, you know, I don't know where those numbers came from. I'm sure that, that I'm not by any means, you know, arguing that they're true or not, but, you know, I can assure you that by shutting down two stores in the City of Largo that sell, you know, 20 or 30 or 40, I don't know, I have no idea how many dogs they sell in a year, but I'm sure it's, you know, less than a couple hundred, is going to make any type of a difference in the overall scheme of what the puppy mill is, you know, issue is.
It's a start.
I'm, excuse me, ma'am, I'm having a conversation now. You had your opportunity. Thank you. So the only thing that it's going to do is put all of those ladies that are sitting out in this room right now out of work, and that's it. That's the only, only thing that we're going to do by passing, by not passing this ordinance or putting those businesses out of business. And they aren't the only folks that work there, so we have a collection of five or six people here that work in the City of Largo that are, that are, will be out of a job if we decide that, you know, the best path forward is to shut this business down. So again, there, I'm not beginning, I don't believe that there's not a problem with regulation of breeders in the country, but I also believe that it's a problem for, that it's an issue that needs to be solved by the organizations, the federal organizations that are in charge of, you know, policing those, those, breeders. So again, I don't want to continue to go down this road. I've stated this many times. I am by no means in favor of putting anybody out of business. I think, you know, there's, it's a legitimate business that has been around in this city for quite a long time. Not only the one, the organization that's here today, but there's another one that's been around for a while. And again, I'm not in favor of putting, I have no idea how many employees that would be between the two, but, you know, we have a lot of conversations today about the budget and saving money for folks and, and doing all those things, and we talk a lot about housing and need for workforce housing and all of those things, but the next conversation comes up and we want to put six or eight or 12 people out of work. Doesn't make any sense. So I am fully in favor of the ordinance that's in front of us today and will support it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that this is a, this ordinance goes a long way to do everything that we can as a city to assure that the stores that are operating in our, in our city, the stores that have been operating in our city, continue to get their puppies from, from sources that are, that are well-run, that are, the dogs are treated well. You know, I've spent a lot of energy and a lot of time on this. I've had workshops with, with pet store owners, the SPCA, different rescue groups, all in the same room, and by and large, everybody, everybody was in agreement that we need to advocate for the players in this arena that are doing things right. And thankfully, the two stores that we're dealing with in our city limits seem to be doing thing right, doing things right from, from everything that we've found, I've found, and I don't think that we should punish them because it's possible that somebody just across the border isn't doing thing right, things right. In fact, if we passed an ordinance banning them, the stores outside of our limits wouldn't have any regulation, and while they don't have any regulation now, but they would flourish and we'd be out of business in two businesses. So I agree with much of what the Vice Mayor said, and if there's no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-51 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes six-one. Thank you. Next up is ordinance, there's ordinance number 21, 2021-53.
This is a second reading of ordinance number 2021-53, amending Section 18.2 of the Comprehensive Development Code to establish a community standards manager's duties and responsibilities regarding the property maintenance code. There are no changes from the first reading on August 3rd, 2021. The previous action was approved on first reading on August 3rd, 2021, by a vote of six-zero, with Mayor Brown being absent. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2021-53, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Section 18.2 of the City of Largo Comprehensive Development Code to establish a community standards manager's duties and responsibilities regarding the property maintenance code, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Before we get started, commission@Largo.com is the email that you can send to concerning that 8th Avenue project. It's commission@Largo.com. It'll get to all of us. Thank you. Any questions from the Commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-53 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is item number 24.
This ordinance authorizes the city to pursue borrowing for the new city hall and the Parks Division building that are included in the FY 22 budget. This ordinance does not approve any specific borrowing. Specific borrowing alternatives will be brought back to the City Commission at a later date, including terms, interest rates, things of that nature. This is the second reading, and there have been no changes from the first reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2021-66, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, authorizing pursuant to Section 5.06 of the city's charter, the borrowing of money through the issuance of bonds by the city in an aggregate amount not to exceed $60 million, providing for certain other manners in connection therewith, and providing an effective date.
Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-66 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number 25.
This is a continuation of the first reading for ordinance 2021-71 that was heard by the City Commission on August 17th, 2021, and this is the public hearing for this item. This reading is for ordinance 2021-71 for the vacation of a 20-foot-wide public sidewalk, drainage, and access easement located at Brookside Villas on 14th Street Northwest. I'm going to show this. The property owner, Brookside Villas Property Owners Association, Inc., has requested that the city approve the vacation of the easement so that the segment of sidewalk within the easement area can be removed. The easement is located within an overall property tract dedicated for drainage and access that will continue to provide the city the right to use and maintain the area. continue to provide the city the right to use and maintain the area for those purposes. The vacation is only intended to remove the 20-foot-wide area as dedicated for a public sidewalk. So, the purpose of this continuation is to provide photographs and additional information regarding the fence and the gate, and to report data that was provided to us by the police department regarding calls for service. So, I'm starting with this view of the sidewalk. This is looking from 14th Street Northwest. This just gives a perspective of where the sidewalk is between two single-family homes. Also, I would like to point out that this entire area is part of a larger tract that is dedicated for access and drainage, and that will stay in place. If the sidewalk easement were to be vacated, that access and drainage would still be intact. So, here's a closer view of the fence and the gate. The fence and gate are owned by the Brookside, excuse me, by the Brookside Villas Property Owners Association, and it is, it runs along the north property line of the Brookside Villas Property Owners Association, Inc. property. You can see that the gate is situated at the, at the point where the sidewalk ends. Just to give kind of an overall view of what, what's, what it looks like back there, so that everyone can see, this is looking to the right of the gate. As you face it, this is a large area that is dedicated for drainage and access, and common open space to the, to the, excuse me, homeowners association. Large retention area. And then, as you look to the left at the gate, there's another large, common area dedicated for drainage and access, a very large pond back there. The final photo, just to give you a perspective from the park side, this is standing to the west inside the park, and looking, looking at the gate from that perspective. So, the data that we received from the police department over the past several years included fourteen calls for service, mostly for criminal mischief, nuisance, and trespassing. City staff initially understood the sidewalk easement to be dedicated to the Brookside Villas Homeowners Association, and provided this information to PD and to the property owner. At some point during the problems that were occurring, the property owners made the decision to install a lock on the gate. At some point in time following that, the Property Owners Association decided that they would like to remove the sidewalk. Staff requested a legal review by the city attorney. It was determined that the sidewalk was within a public easement, and that the easement would need to be vacated prior to the removal of the sidewalk. The property owner then began the process for requesting a vacation of the easement, and that is what brings us before you today for this, to consideration of this item. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Ordinance number 2021-71, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, vacating a 20-foot-wide public sidewalk drainage and access easement located between lots 17 and 18, Brookside Villas, as recorded in plat book 140, pages 75 through 78, Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have one card. Mary Jackson.
Won't start talking.
We won't. You can stand there for a second silent even, and we won't even start until you start talking.
Thank you. Yes, the earlier gentleman said a tale of two cities. This is a tale of two neighborhoods. That easement, well, I wanted to go over the minutes from the last session, because some things were said that I think need addressing. First, the, it said, the, the staff here said it's no longer necessary for public purposes. It, there's no access to 14th Street from the west side of it, except this easement between Eighth Avenue Northwest, Melonbacher, and West Bay. Traditionally, students have used that cut, that cut-through on the easement to go across to the trail, to ride down to Mildred Helms on their bicycle safely. Those of, those on the other side of 14th, on the east side, have used it to get to that lovely park. Now, it's a half a mile farther if you have to go all the way around Melonbacher. And I'm not getting any younger, I'm not going to be able to do that forever with my dog. It's, it's been there forever. That's why it was a public easement. It was, it says it was voluntary, and maybe kinda, but not really. It was at the, it was at the pre-building meeting with the, with the developer, where he promised it to us, because we said that we want an easement there. So, that's why we got it. And it was there for a couple of years before the president of the homeowners association got into some tiffs with the local teenagers that I haven't seen since. And I'm betting that's what the majority of those fourteen calls to the police were, was basically a get off my property thing. And people on both sides are not happy about it. I've talked to both sides of the, of 14th Street, on the, on the backside, that can't get out except for that way. People on bicycles wanting to go to their jobs can't get out that way anymore. They have to go way west and south to get to West Bay if they don't go to 14th. On the east side, actually, we're the only ones that got notices on the east side. On the west side, those people got no notices. And the ones on the east side I talked to didn't understand it until I explained it to them. So, now, they mentioned the destruction and disturbances. There was not any destruction that was visible. I was surprised that there wasn't more destruction, because the gentleman was so aggressive, and so antagonistic to teenagers, and me, and others in the area. The, the people climb over the fence, they said. That kind of shows there's a real need for it there, that somebody's, you can't see in the pictures, but that fence has some mean little spikes on top. And so, somebody's serious about getting over it if they climb over that. There were a few other things I wanted to say, but if the gate is locked 24/7 illegally, I addressed, I called the city at that time and said, this is not right, and others did as well. And I was told by the code enforcement, we can't do anything, as it was mentioned by her, that they were told it was legal. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only card I had.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Carroll?
It may be in there. And, and thank you for the invitations to come out and look at that. I had several invitations, but, but before anybody invited me, I went out and looked at it anyway. So, and who paid to put that sidewalk in?
The development paid to put the sidewalk.
It was done as part of the original, and the fence, I know we had some discussion and debate at the, at the previous hearing about the property line. If the property owners had not installed a gate there, and just crossed the sidewalk with a fence, would they have been within their rights to do that at that point? Because does this public property, is it contiguous with other public property?
Well, this, I'm not sure if I understand.
I mean, do you have to cross any private property if you're traveling west on this sidewalk and go into the, if the gate was gone, would you be stepping on anybody's private property to get into the park?
You would be in a, you'd be within the sidewalk easement area, and also within that greater common area.
And then, when you go through where the gate is now, you'd be on public property on the other side of that fence?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I wasn't quite sure about that without looking at surveys and so forth. That, that was my question, is, you know, how, how a fence got installed across that public property in the first place, but.
Yeah, to be clear, the easement is on private property, but it grants pedestrian easement across that property for pedestrian use for anybody.
That's right.
Those were my questions.
Commissioner Gerard.
Thank you. This, this sidewalk runs between two private homes, two single-family homes. And can you clarify that the, that, because it's come up, that the fence and the gate are actually on the Brookwood properties, right? It doesn't, it doesn't run on any public park property or the park. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. I, I am familiar with this situation. I've been familiar with this situation. The easement that, that is being vacated is only for the sidewalk. The utility easement would still be there. There's been no objection from any of the utilities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. I understand that some people might want access to the park via this sidewalk. However, the actual entrances to the park are on, I believe, 16th, and then there's another access to it on Melonbacher. This is not, you know, a designed access to the park. Am I correct?
There are other access.
Right. And, and the main, the main entrance to the park is on 16th, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And as I also understand, that park is now subject to a problem-oriented policing coverage. Is that correct?
I do not know that.
My understanding, then just say, let me say that my, my understanding is that there are additional patrols in the park because of the problem-oriented policing request. And there have been, there have been calls to the police about this. So, this is an ongoing thing. It's not something that's in the past. The, the space between these two homes, and I just want to, you know, and, and I know that there have been folks out there to take a look at it, but the space between these two homes is minimal. So, people who are using the sidewalk are actually walking past people's bedrooms, their kitchens, their private areas. And so, there's a, well, not a constant, but there's a flow of foot traffic back and forth between these two private homes, and it's a nuisance. Not only is it a nuisance, but it's disturbing their, their peaceful use of their property. I've been aware of this for a while. I've been out there a number of times. I've looked at the situation. I've walked the park, which by the way, could certainly use a facelift. And, and I, I see no reason at all why we shouldn't grant this vacation. I, I think it's not only no reason at all why we shouldn't, I think it's really incumbent on us to grant this, to give these people some peaceful use of their property. It's been going on for a long time, and, you know, and I understand what the neighbors may think about this, but if they want to get to the park, they can use the general entrance. So, thank you.
Thank you. I saw Mr. Zimmert raising his hand before Commissioner Gerard spoke. Mr. Zimmert.
You're muted, Mr. Zimmert.
You might be muted, because I can't, we can't hear you.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you. I just want to expand on what Ms. Rock said in answer to Commissioner Gerard's question about the fence. Just so we're clear with regard to the fence, the fence crosses the public easement where the public easement is adjacent to the city park. And that's where the gate is located. If the commission does not vacate the easement, the gate can stay, but the gate cannot be locked, because that is inconsistent with the grant of the easement that allows public access along that sidewalk and the easement area into the park. How that gate came to be locked is, you know, I guess, there's, there's been some discussion as to how that occurred between this meeting and the last commission meeting. I haven't really looked into it, but it doesn't really matter that the gate would have to be opened. But I just want to make it clear, it's not that the, the fence may be outside of the easement area, may be on private property, but the gate is on the public easement. Does that, hopefully that makes sense.
Mr. Zimmert, since, since you're here, I'm going to ask you a question. If, if the park closed at a certain time, if it was closed and marked to be closed from sunset to sunrise, for example, could that gate be locked at that point?
The city could agree, yes, to, to have the gate locked, let's say, sun, you know, sunset to sunrise, something like that. But the city would have to control that.
Understood. Vice Mayor Robinson.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to Mr. Giaccondo for having me out and showing me where the sidewalk was, because when we talked about it last time, I had no idea what we were talking, I mean, I knew the property, but I didn't know where the location of the sidewalk was. I want to say I'm sympathetic to the speaker's comments from earlier. I, I just think that's a terrible, and I, I, apparently, the sidewalk is there because the, the homeowner's in the, in the, in the air, surrounding area asked for it to be there when, whatever the process was, whether it was a DA, or whatever, however that property was developed. So, I, I think it makes sense to have some sort of access to that park. But my, that was a private property prior to, I mean, it was open field, but it was private property prior to these villas being put on there. And I don't know what the, if there was any type of an arrangement with the, the lady who owned the property, if, you know, people were being allowed to cross through there to get to the park or not. I think, well, it doesn't matter. So, anyhow, I, I think, you know, I, I really just think it's a terrible place for a sidewalk. I mean, I, if, I can understand the, the want to, you know, to, the access is understanding, I understand that, 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 you know, people want to be able to get from 15th and 16th to 14th, and, and the ease of access to get to the trail. That makes sense. And I, I wish we could find a way to do that without having to go between two houses that are fairly, you know, within 20 feet of each other anyhow. But in my, you know, having seen the sidewalk, you know, and hearing about some, I guess there was a, you know, a situation where there was a homeless person sleeping on a back porch there, because, you know, it's an easy place for him to find a, you know, it's a sidewalk, so they just walk down there. And then, you know, some of the other situations where there's a pond back there, you know, I guess some folks probably believe that that's an open access area. It's obviously part of the private property of the villas. So, I, you know, again, sympathetic to the, to the issues of having, you know, ease of access to the park, as well as, you know, for transportation and other things, but I just think it's a, just, it's just a bad place for a sidewalk to be. And, and if there were some way to just isolate the sidewalk, I think it, you know, you would be fine. But I, you can't isolate that sidewalk without isolating the rest of the access to the utilities that are, that are in there as well. So, yeah, it's unfortunate situation.
Thank you. Commissioner Hulk.
Okay, so, this, this sidewalk was built when, when these buildings were built, correct?
That's correct.
So, that was part of the plan. And how long is that, how old is that neighborhood approximately?
I, I'm trying to remember. I think.
About five years.
Five years?
Yeah.
From the audience.
From the audience. Everybody in the audience was holding up then.
So, the sidewalk's been there for, for five years since it was built. We've had fourteen calls of service for normal park mischief, which is in the park or on the sidewalk?
We asked for data back to 2017.
Okay.
Because I think that's when the people were really moving in, and, you know, establishing residents there. So, that's where the data came from.
Okay. And that was the total calls of service from 17 to now, is 14?
For this location. For this location, yes.
So, so the people that live along that sidewalk knew that that was a public sidewalk when they purchased those properties on either side of it?
I don't know.
I mean, I see somebody shaking their head no, but how can you not know that that was a public sidewalk if you were purchasing those properties on either side?
I can't speak for whether or not, they may have thought it was for the homeowners association. I don't know what they thought, you know.
Okay, and then, so, so this vacation of easement that they're looking for to get rid of the sidewalk, this came up just recently by, so it's through the homeowners association. So to me, that would mean that everybody that's part of that association would be wanting this removed? Or is it somebody who is now the president of the association who has decided that they want to make this change? This is why I would never live in a homeowners association place because you get one person in there who takes total control. I just feel like this is, has been a public access since it was built. It goes through to one of our parks. If the gate needs to be locked when the park closes, that's great, but to me, it should not be locked all the time now. The people who live on either side of those should have known that that was a public sidewalk and it, I mean, you can clearly see that it's access to a park. I just, I agree with Ms. Jackson that if you are living in that area, that was one of the things that you looked at at that area, it's like, oh, access to the park. I just, you know, it's exactly what it's called. It's a public sidewalk leading to a public park. So I'm just not in favor right now of getting rid of that sidewalk.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger.
I agree with much what Commissioner Holt just said, and I think you just answered one of my questions, which was the intention of the gate when it was built, doing, was it, was the intention to have it go directly, the park access? Or you, I don't know, Anne, if you mentioned that.
The purpose of the gate was?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the sidewalk.
Oh, the, the purpose of the sidewalk was for access to the park.
Okay. So, and I think Commissioner Holt brought up a good point too about having an HOA. Isn't that something, we may not know that, I understand or you, but wouldn't that be something that would have to run by their homeowners association? As putting just a question out there.
And what, wouldn't what be something, be?
Wouldn't having it removed?
Oh, having it removed. It's my.
Wouldn't that be something that their HOA would have to support?
It's my understanding that they voted to remove the sidewalk, and that's when the request came to us to remove it. So I don't have any, that's just what I was told, you know, that it was voted on by the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard.
Thank you. There have been some questions raised here, and I know that Mr. Giaccondo, who is, I believe, the president of the homeowners association right now is here, along with his consul, I believe his consul is here too, who might be able to answer some of these historic questions. My understanding, and, you know, this is secondhand, my understanding is that when Brookside Villas was developed, it was the understanding of the homeowners and the homeowners association that this easement was actually private and was only determined recently, within the last year or so, that no, this is public. So they were under, you know, a misconception. And I'm going to state again that the access to the park is, you know, the entrance to the park is on 16th Street, and there's another entrance to the park off of Mellembacher coming down, I believe, 15th.
Yeah.
And the question of the gate is, you know, is an important question. If the gate has to remain open during the daytime hours and can only be locked at night, I would say that that makes it more incumbent to remove the sidewalk. I hope that, I hope that everybody understands that the easement is 20 feet wide. That's the space between the two homes. So there's a 20, there's 20 feet between these two homes or the easement here, and so what these folks have are people parading up and down this sidewalk right between their homes and right outside their windows. I don't think it's fair to think that these people should have known in advance because what they knew in advance and what their understanding was, their belief was, is that it's private, that it's a private easement. And I do believe that the recommendation of locking the gate, and as I said, Mr. Giaccondo's here, I don't know if his consul's here with him, was actually a recommendation that was made by an outside party to lock it, to stop, to put an end to this, you know, to this disturbance, to the peaceful use of their homes. I don't, I don't, this is not like a sidewalk that runs in front of somebody's home or that runs down a street. This is a sidewalk that runs right between two private homes, and these people can't enjoy their property, can't enjoy their homes and their peaceful life because it's being used as a thoroughfare. And the park has had problems. There have been calls about the park and the park has, and I can get into it, but just believe, you know, just understand that, you know, that the police are now doing additional patrols there while people use those for illegal and immoral purposes. So, you know, I empathize with the people of the neighborhood, you know, who would like to have that simpler and more direct path to the park, but I don't know how many people in this commission would like to have people trotting up and down between their homes or right outside their windows to get someplace. You know, would you like to have that happening, you know, every day or a couple of times a week, or somebody sleeping on your back porch, or maybe falling into the retention pond, you know, in your backyard? It's not a question of being, how can I put this? This is not a question of, oh, this is a public, this is a public easement and the public should be allowed to use it. This is a question of people can't have any peace in their home. That's the question. And they're asking the city to vacate it just so they can have some peaceful use to their home. And if people want to use the park, I'm sorry, you know, take the longer way around. It's not going to kill anybody to take the longer way around. It's just not going to. But it's certainly going to be painful to the people who live here if they have to continue and this commission tells them, no, you can't remove this sidewalk, you just have to put up with it forever. It's just not right.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
I kind of agree with what Vice Mayor Robinson said and his comments there. I went out after that meeting and took a look at it and satisfied my questions that I kind of thought or I had at that meeting. So I would like to also, out of this conversation and in the future, that when something is being, because I can see when they were designing this, this looking like it's a private from one neighborhood getting through. I can, personally, I can see that's what they were thinking. But I kind of want to pull off a little bit and say, I don't want this, if this is what we're, a headache that we're getting because of this, in the future developments of another neighborhood or anything like that, that this is not, this is something we're taking in consideration, that in five years after development happens, change of people, they have different views. I don't want a neighborhood to be coming in and saying, well, you built it between homes. So maybe looking at that in the future, any other developments that come through, I just don't want to go through this headache again of this. So if we could, as staff, look at stuff like that when it comes through a little bit more diligently or, you know, willing to take into the neighbors, because I honestly, I agree with Commissioner Gerard, that's right between two homes. I mean, I honestly, it's kind of a little dicey in my view. So, thank you.
Thank you. I had a question about the width of the easement. The easement is 20 feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
So there is some distance between the end of the easement and the homes, like private property of, I don't know, four or five feet, is that right?
The lots where the single-family homes are on, the distance between those two lots might be a little wider than the 20 feet? Is that what you're asking?
Well, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because if the easement's 20 feet, I don't think we would allow them to build a house directly on that easement. Am I correct?
Well, the, there is a small piece of the easement that actually runs through a side of the, of one of the lots. But, you know, it's, it's not unusual to have an easement on.
Do you have any idea how far it is from one house to the other?
It might be 30 feet.
Okay. And so, you know, to the one house, I know it's a little bit closer to one house than it is to the other house. Is there anything in our, there may be homeowners association stuff, but is there anything in our code that would disallow the property owners on either side to establish some type of barrier of separation, if you will? You know, could they plant, put a fence or a hedge or something like that to separate this pedestrian easement from their property?
Well, it would, that whole area needs to remain available for access to the retention areas in the back. If there were some way to do that, I don't know how it would be done. It would have to be some pretty large gates with, I don't even, I don't even think I can answer that. I'm not sure how that could be done.
My understanding is that at least, at least one of the owners on either side was, when they purchased the property from the developer, they were under the understanding it's a private sidewalk, private situation for the use of their folks only, although it's really clear. I mean, it's on the, you look on the property appraiser's website, there's an easement there, and the developer knew that that was a public access easement because it was part of the agreement that we had with them. They built the sidewalk so people that walk down 14th can access that park. So I, I mean, I certainly understand the concerns and, you know, I live in a pretty urban area of the city of Largo where there's people walking behind my house and in front of my house all the time. I haven't had anybody come on my back porch that I know of. My dog helps prevent that, I guess. But, you know, I, the reason that we're talking about this probably now is because I think it's important to connect parks to the neighbors, to the neighborhoods. You can get into Largo Central Park in a lot of different ways, right? There's a lot of sidewalks that lead to Largo Central Park. This park has, with this gate closed, it has one way to get in. And 16th, I don't, doesn't have a sidewalk from Mellembacher. So if you're a kid that wants to go to the Northwest Park and you live, you'd walk down Mellembacher and walk down the middle of 16th to get over to the park. I'd like to, at some point, work on that as well because I think that's a gap in our sidewalk network. But I haven't been, I mean, I'm, like, you know, the same way that Commissioner Robinson, Vice Mayor Robinson is sympathetic to the people that used to use this to access the park, I'm sympathetic to the people that live in those townhomes and the single-family homes there, but it's what the developer built, and it was built with the intent to increase connectivity. And that's something that we've been preaching here at the city of Largo for a long, long time. It's something that, when I ran for office, I wanted to increase the pedestrian activity in our city. And it'd take a lot to convince me to pull back from that on this particular instance. Commissioner Carroll.
Yeah, you kind of wrapped it up for me too, and I can understand both points of view on this, but it's my belief that a sidewalk on a public right-of-way or public easement is an invitation to enter just by the virtue of its existence. And, you know, this is a situation that the city commission has now asked to deal with that was really, you know, there's responsibilities borne by the developer and how these plans were laid out because it's quite clear that that's a utility, an easement there. Again, I don't think that I would buy a house right next to a sidewalk, that people were going to go up and down, you know, at all hours of the day and night, but, you know, that's a responsibility of the property owner as far as I'm concerned. A sidewalk that runs parallel to the roadway in front of any number of locations around the city is this close to residences. So, you know, I understand the point of view, and with all due respect, I can't support removing that sidewalk.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard.
I appreciate you listening to me bellyache so much here. I have to repeat that when the property owners, the homeowners there, bought their property, they were under the understanding that this was a private sidewalk. The easement is a utility easement, and then there's the sidewalk. I know you can't really separate them, but maybe you can. It was only within the last year or so, I think, that they became aware of the, no, this is a public, this is a public sidewalk, this is a public easement. So perhaps they should have investigated further, but they were given assurances by the developer that this is private. I also understand the reasoning, you know, that, well, maybe you can put up site barriers or some kind of plantings. But when there's 30 feet between, perhaps, between these two homes, to put up a site barrier without interfering with the easement means that you're going to have a site barrier four or five feet right outside your window, which of course is going to, you know, have an impact on, you know, what you can see, you know, and your sightline. I understand, you know, the question of mobility or the issues of mobility and the issues of making access to the public park, but I have to repeat again, this park and these properties are not quite the same as Largo Central Park or Taylor Park or whatever, where the entrances are far removed from private homes. These are private homes. These people live here and they didn't intend to be in an urban area. This was like a suburban area to them or, you know, slightly outside the urban area, and they want peaceful use of their property. As I said, Mr. Giaccondo's here, he can maybe give you a little bit more history. There was a question also about, you know, about, you know, a president of the homeowners association running roughshod. That's not what happened. The city manager actually attended one of the homeowners association meetings, had a conversation with them about what's going on. This is, this is something that they're all asking for, and they, and they're all paying for it too. So, and I may be, I may be just one person here saying this, but there's, you know, there's an issue of, there are ways to get around to the park. We're not, you know, vacating this sidewalk is not cutting off access to the park. What it's doing is letting these people have some peace. That's what it's doing. And I just wish, I just, I just hope that folks would understand, nobody here is trying to be mean, they're just trying to get some peace. And I understand that there are alleys behind homes, you know, and those alleys can be pretty wide and people will use the alleys, and I understand, you know, about living in an urban area where the sidewalk runs close to your, to your, to your front yard or, you know, if there's a smaller front yard. This is not that situation. This is very different from that type of situation. If anybody's been out there, and I know that several members of the commission have been out there to take a look at it, I will once again say, you know, it's very clear that this is, this is a disturbance to these people. They're not trying to be mean, you know, they're not trying to be ornery, they're simply trying to have some. know, they're not trying to be ornery. They're simply trying to have some peace. And this thing, this never should have even come to this, to this, you know, this situation. None of the city departments are objecting to this. None of the utilities are objecting to this. Of all the people who are notified, one person came and testified, came and spoke against it. So, you know, I, I don't know what else I can say about this, but, you know, I, I, I hope that we would take a look at this from another point of view, just to, from, simply from another point of view. Nobody's being denied access to the park. What these homeowners are being denied is, once again, the peaceful and serene use of their homes, of their homes. That's the question here. And that's why they've asked to simply remove the sidewalk, you know? And especially if they're going to have to have that gate open during the day. That, that makes it even worse. That's an invitation.
Well, it's a public access.
Well, it's a public access now.
Well, it's not, because there's a gate across it right now. But, um...
Yeah, there's a gate across a public easement, I understand that. But if, if the sidewalk can be removed, then that wouldn't be the issue. And if the sidewalk has to stay and that gate has to be open, that just exacerbates the problem for these people who live here.
Thank you. Commissioner Hulk?
Approximately how many people a day, does anybody know that actually use that sidewalk to go through there? Did anybody do like a traffic study?
No, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Because, I mean, I know I drove through, you know, a couple of times. I never saw anybody on the sidewalk when I drove that way. So, I tried several different times during the day, too. So, just wondering.
So, Mr. Giacando, if you know how many people...
Can I speak?
Yeah, please. Come on up. Could you give Mr. Giacando three minutes? Thank you. But I'm going to ask you a question before you get started.
Okay.
Hold on. But during, during the day, how many people would use that sidewalk to get into, to the park, or to, however traverse back and forth during the day before there was a gate or a fence there?
Not many at all, very few.
And then when was most, were most of the problems at night?
All the problems were at night. This lady here is actually a very nice lady. She walks over there to walk her dog, and she never caused any problems for anybody. That's not when the issues happen. The issues happen at night, when people are going through there. The issues happen when kids take, take the access to the extreme and decide they can go in our ponds. And there's a whole liability issue that comes up then. Who's responsible if some kid gets drowns or gets hurt in our pond after he's used this public, was supposedly a public sidewalk? But I want to be clear on how this all started and how we got to where we're at.
Ann, could you go ahead and start? Thank you.
Our, our developer told us it was a, it was a sidewalk to be used for Brookside Villas access to the park, gave us the key to lock the gate, said you could lock it whenever you want. When we moved in, we decided, as a board, and the whole board's here, we decided to leave it open and let the people walk through. That's when all the problems started, at night, just one after another, including the homeless lady that spent the night on my porch. It was, and that was when I called Teresa Bryden's office in community development, and she told me emphatically it was private property and we could lock the gate. And that's when we locked it, not until we were told by the city that we could do it. That caused a bunch of problems with kids bending the bars on the gate, damaging stuff. We called the police. The police wanted me to sign a no trespass order. I said okay, we talked to our, the board, agreed to do it. We went down to sign the no trespass order, and the police told me in order to do that, they had to verify that it was not a public access. Two officers came to my house with a copy of the plat showing me the dedication, highlighted, and telling me it was not a public access, and allowing me to sign a no trespass order. Fast forward a few more years, now the gate's locked, nobody's going through there, the police have run everybody away. Now, we have an erosion issue happen on our bank. We spent $4,000 fixing this issue. When the engineers were there, they said, "We noticed you're not using the sidewalk. That's causing your problem. The water's running down the sidewalk, and it's coming down this bank, and it's washing it away. If you're not using it, take the sidewalk out." It was only then that we contacted the city to ask to remove the sidewalk, and it was only then that we were told it was a public access. Until that, no one had any knowledge that it was a public access in our neighborhood. And that's where we're at today.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Giacando a question? When, when did the, when did that, that happen? When the engineer said that the water's running down from the sidewalk and eroding, and then you did, was that?
Remember when we did that, it was about two years ago? It was funny, it was actually about a year ago, was when, when we first called and spoke to AMRAK about removing the sidewalk.
Okay.
That's when that took place.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's a far cry from the disturbances and the people looking in your windows. And, I mean, that's like a whole nother ballgame, what we were just told just now. That's like a totally different scheme of, of public disturbance and, and privacy issues. I mean, now we're talking about erosion, and, you know, that, that's a totally different ballgame than what is presented to us. And what you've been talking about, you know, as far as people's privacy and, and not knowing, and, I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's like, this is, this, what we're looking at here is totally different than what was just presented to us.
Any other questions or comments?
I do want to apologize that I didn't bring up the erosion issue, too. That did skip my mind, and, you know, I take responsibility for that, which is why I'm glad that Mr. Giacando got up here and shared that story.
I think, I thought earlier, Mayor, that Commissioner Finger was trying to get your attention, but I'm not sure.
No, she's shaking her head no.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-71 on first reading and schedule a second reading on September 21, 2021.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Could you pull the board, please?
Commissioner Gerard?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
No.
Vice Mayor Robinson? Commissioner Hulk?
No.
Commissioner Carroll?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Finger?
No.
Motion fail, the motion denied three to four.
Thank you. Next up is item number 26.
To be clear, can we tell them exactly what, I, I just...
I'm sorry.
Alan, or, I would like to clarify what to the neighbors, that, what this vote just did.
I think Mr. Zepplin might be the best person to explain that.
Yes, let me address that. So, with the motion being denied, you haven't taken action yet. So, you will need to take a separate motion to deny approval of the ordinance, so that there's actually a motion that passes and takes action. And what that motion would do would mean that it would deny the application for the vacation, and the sidewalk would remain available to the public, and the gate would have to remain open and in control of the city, which we could control it in accordance with the hours of the park.
Does everybody understand that?
So, you would, right, I mean, you, you would need a motion to disapprove the ordinance, is what Alan's saying.
To deny the application for vacation of easement, if that's...
Alan, if that happens, and this sidewalk has to remain, and that gate has to be open during the day and can be locked at night, who would be responsible for going out there and locking that gate every night?
The city would have to be in control of the gate.
Me?
Yeah. We're going to put Commissioner Gerard in charge of that.
So, the, so, so somebody from Parks Department would do that every, every night, right? Do we have any locking gates on any other parks?
Yeah, Bonner Park, Gallow.
Bonner Park, right, okay.
Nature, nature preserve. Off the top of my head, that's all I got.
So, what are we waiting on? A motion?
A motion, another motion, because that, we'd have to make a motion to deny the application for vacation of easement as...
Okay, I, I move to deny the application for vacation of easement.
Second.
So, can I just break in? Commissioner, if you look at the potential, potential motion, it says, "I move to approve slash disapprove," so you can just read that motion and use the word "disapprove" instead of "approve" in the, in the staff report.
Oh, I see. I, I got you. So, so...
I'm having trouble getting that one there.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Do I need to talk louder?
No.
Commissioner, if you look in the staff report, there's a potential motion or proposed motion that says, "I move to approve slash disapprove." If you read that motion, just deleting the word "approve," that's what I'm trying to convey.
We have to ma, we have to pass a motion to disapprove, rather than just...
Correct.
Okay, so you want a motion to disapprove?
Right. So, you're going to read that?
Ordinance number 2171 on first reading.
Correct. That's the motion.
Schedule a second. You got...
No, schedule a second reading.
No second, yeah, sorry. So, I have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the board?
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
No.
Commissioner Hulk?
Yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Finger?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerard?
No.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. Item number 26.
Brandon, could you turn my slide deck on, please? Okay, thank you. So, good evening. This is Resolution 20, oh, are we here? Resolution 2301, which is requesting city commission approval for the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the federal government for expenditure of the American Rescue Plan Act, which I will call ARPA. Give it just a second. Which is, provides funding for COVID recovery and resilience. Approval of this resolution will allow, allow the city to draw down the fundly directly from the U.S. Treasury. Next slide, please. And for benefit of our community members, the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, was signed into law on March 11, 2021. Among its many functions, the act awarded $350 billion in direct financial aid to states, counties, and municipalities of certain sizes, with the purpose of providing financial support to respond and recover from the impacts of COVID-19. Next slide. ARPA was created with a set of intended outcomes and provides direct aid for response-related activities similar to other grant programs we have seen during the pandemic, like the CARES Act. Another intended outcome is the mitigation of the economic impacts of the pandemic on communities. And this is particularly true in areas where data has shown that communities have been impacted the greatest. ARPA outlines database findings indicating that low income in racially and ethnically diverse areas of community have been impacted the most. Therefore, spending to address issues in predetermined qualified census tracts and opportunity zones are highlighted specifically in the legislation. Finally, the intended outcome is to support community resilience efforts in the face of future pandemics and other disasters. Next slide, please. So, specifically related to AR, to Largo, we were awarded $12.9 million in direct aid to spend on the following allowable use areas: to support COVID-19-related public health expenditures, address the negative impacts of COVID-19, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Spending in these allowable use categories must be encumbered by December of 2024 and fully expended by December 2026. Next slide. So, where are we now at spending our $12.9 million? We're currently in these three areas right now of learning, planning, and preparing for community engagement efforts. In the learning area, in May of 2021, the U.S. Treasury released an interim final rule, which articulates the allowable uses for ARPA, as I previously outlined. Since that time, the U.S. Treasury continues to answer questions and provide further clarifications on allowable uses and associated compliance requirements. We continue to learn about these updates and have this information inform our planning efforts. In the planning area, not only are we working on developing planning tools and identifying projects that may align with allowable uses, we're also planning on how to effectively administer these grant funds. Early in fiscal year 2022, staff plans to bring a budget amendment to the city commission to appropriate ARPA funds to hire a full-time grant manager to take on the planning and compliance work associated with the effective spending of these funds. This is an approach many surrounding, surrounding communities are taking. And just to give you a point of reference, our city's housing program has approximately four FTEs supporting roughly between $3 and $6 million worth of annual grant funding. So, this would be a full-time position for a temporary basis, but we're still working on developing those parameters right now. Finally, we're working with our communications and engagement team on the community engagement campaign on how to better understand how the community may prioritize the allowable uses of our ARPA funds. Next slide. And as a reminder, in the fiscal year 2022 budget, we do have approximately $4 million worth of planned spending identified. The total spending in the prevention category includes enhancing our sheltering capabilities for social distancing, and in the resilience category, looking at making a number of planning-related investments that will impact the, the community for generations to come. Next slide. We are still working on our lost revenue calculations. The federal government does prescribe a very, a very technical way to calculate your lost revenue, and we are planning to have those numbers finalized by December of this calendar year to know exactly how much revenue we have lost from the pandemic. But since the bulk of our revenue loss was felt in recreation, we are planning to spend the funds that are allowable under this category in necessary facility improvements and recreation parks and arts. We have no planned spending right now for premium pay for essential workers. And currently, there are a few small project plans in the water, wastewater, and broadband category. But given that this is an area where we have a lot of upcoming new regulation, this is an area where we may see additional spending proposed. Next slide. So, where we're at now and what everyone can expect next, despite the $4 million in planned spending, we do not plan to actually start spending ARPA funds for a few more months. As you can see by the graphic on your screen here, the timeline includes a fall community engagement campaign, which will kick off in October, followed by the results presented to the city commission just before the holidays in December. After that, we'll finalize preliminary spending plans and bring that to approval for the city commission, and we'll begin initial planned spending in early calendar year 2022. Again, all of this with the goal of having the funds fully expended by December 31, 2026. Next slide, please. Finally, we are planning the community engagement efforts right now. We plan to provide brief, a brief educational segment to align community expectations with allowable uses for the funds. I know we've all had the question, I know I get it daily, but I have heard from you all, too, that community members ask if we can spend the money on X, Y, and Z. And of course, we know that there are some clear requirements, so we do need to provide some education on that. And we also hope to inform the community members on the known impacts on our community, but also seek to learn about community member impacts that we may not be aware of. So, it would be a bidirectional education campaign. We will seek input on the allowable uses in a number of different ways, including feedback on the proposed spending that you've already seen, providing examples of allowable uses in those categories, and then an open feedback or call for ideas in those categories. Given continued COVID gathering restrictions, we hope to provide digital engagement opportunities as well as in-person opportunities with our advisory board members, since that's an existing in-person gathering place. We will also continue to use our tools like Balancing Act while also looking for other options to engage the community through surveys and other outlets that we may be able to use in other future community engagement... use in other future community engagement campaigns. And as we progress in the planning process, we will definitely provide further details to the commission and the community on how to engage on the use of the ARPA funds. Next slide, please. And finally, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the community can always send us an email on their ideas at opb@largo.com, communications@largo.com, or view more information on the current plan spending at largo.com/financialcenter.
Resolution number 2301, a resolution of the city of Largo, Florida, delegating to the city manager the authority to legally bind the city of Largo for the sole purpose of requesting federal reimbursement under the American Recovery Plan Act, providing assistance for the recovery from COVID-19, authorizing the city manager to enter into a federally-funded subaward and grant agreement without further authorization from the commission, up to a maximum aggregate amount of $12,960,041, repealing all resolutions in conflict and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Thank you. Just real quick, because I had a whole lot of questions, and you answered almost all of them, so I was over here like scratching them all out. But one of the questions I have, and maybe we don't know, maybe we do, or maybe we're not real clear on it yet, but is any type of like affordable housing or housing in general something that we can spend any of this money on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll talk about it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve resolution number 2301.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next is item number 27.
The item before you is a resolution to reduce certain building permit and inspection fees through the end of calendar year 2022. And I just lost my thought. Oh, it came back, sorry. The goal of this is very simple, and it's just to assist with the recovery of the, for the local citizens, the businesses, and the developers by reducing the permit fees. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Resolution number 2302, a resolution of the city of Largo, Florida, temporarily reducing certain building construction permit and inspection fees, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yep. Thank you. Real quick, has there been a lot of feedback from the building community to this, or is this something some of the other municipalities in the area are doing as well, or is this just something that, you know, how did this come about?
So we started this, this will be the second version of this resolution. We started this last year, so about 12 months ago. We kind of guesstimate because our software system doesn't have a real good reporting tool for savings, but there's been close to a million dollars in savings to the public for anyone that's applied for permits. The developers that are coming in for big jobs appreciate it, and they try to get permits in before the expiration of this. The average citizen that puts up a fence that's going to save, you know, $10 or $20 or $100 hasn't really said anything. So there has been little feedback from, you know, call them the regular person, but the big developers have appreciated it. I know Orlando has done some things like this, and there are probably some others that are also, but we didn't really look at what they were doing. We wanted to look at what would be best suited here.
Fantastic. Great. And I just wanted to point out that Mr. Hatton gets the award for the best mask of the night.
Yeah, we still have.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, but definitely in the lead.
Do I have to stay for the award?
No, you can go on. We'll call the winners at the end.
Commissioner Gerard?
No, nothing.
Mr. Smith?
Kind of tying earlier to what I said about the planning, the planning position, what impact will that have on their department? We're looking at adding a planner on there. Reducing this, most likely you said that, you know, big developments, kind of thank it kind of deal. Are we balancing that also, that they're not getting over backlog on their side?
So the building division is an enterprise fund, so all of the revenue from permit fees and inspection fees and plan review stays in the building division. It doesn't go to general fund. So it has no bearing on any other departments or any other employees. So we work closely with the planning department, but by reducing our fees, it's not going to affect their funds at all.
I mean, their workload. That's my question, is are they going to get, you know, backlogged where they're already trying to fill up and catch up with what they're doing? Here we're doing, kind of doing this and.
So by reducing the fees, I'm hoping that it brings more development to the city. So I hope so. And Alicia's not here, so I can say out loud, I hope it buries her because we're willing to help her more.
I would love that. I just want to make sure that when we bury her, we get her more staff that can compensate to get the things flowing.
Well, and as a side note, I'll tell you that the building division and planning and all the departments, including engineering, who's not part of our department anymore division, we all work so well together that when people walk in the front door into the building department or into any of the divisions, they don't really see a division between. So to many people, planning and building, housing, economic development are all one unity or one item, and they don't think of as different people. But we're going to hope that Alicia gets her extra person and that we give her plenty of work to do.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to mention is, in addition to the upgrade of the position that we discussed tonight in the planning division, there's also included in the budget for next year, an additional planner one position. Because we do recognize the increased workload that they have.
Okay. And then just, here's another question that's maybe just maybe not in that department, working in labor. I had a business that had a kind of, now, do we have a checklist of, when you come in for a permit, is there a checklist of what you're required to have or need? Or do we kind of say, here's what you basically need, come back to us? I'm getting kind of mixed messages from a couple businesses that say that they're.
We have on our website a checklist for permitting. The problem with a full checklist is the code is, you know, stacked books this thick. So having an item, you know, a list that's going to cover every item would be almost impossible. But I can say that staff does a very good job of explaining to people what they need. I can't speak for the ones that you're talking about, but in some cases, they get different stories because, say, Pinellas County doesn't require the same thing for, call it a business tax, because they don't have a business tax like Largo does. So in many cases, they get different stories from other places. So when they come to us, they think they know what they need to bring, and they don't. But we do, I believe we do a great job trying to help people and educate them. We have multiple different email addresses that people can email specifically, and I have like four to five people that check those daily to try to answer questions. It is difficult to answer all the questions, and one of the trials would be the amount of information that we may get from someone may be limited upfront, and then the next time they come in, they give us more information, which may create more questions on our side or more requirements. So part of it is a communication on both sides. But we do try very hard to make sure people know what they need.
Okay, because the one I'm kind of is the treatment center that's on fourth. Yeah, our eighth. They, it seems to be getting lost in permitting or requirements. And I'm just, that's something that came up on my radar. And the other one was the gelato place that opened on Seminole. Great, great product. If you can get out there, it's really, really good. But it seemed like they got tied up into permitting for, in the weeds, for over four months, that their real estate, their landlord was basically already charging them, and we're trying to, and I just want to understand that if it's, we're not having enough staff, or is it that we're not getting the message clear to them of what it is? I mean, like I said, I want tons, you know, businesses coming in here, great restaurants, breweries are my big thing. But I don't want us to be handicapping ourselves where we're getting in the weeds, where it's email back, get this back kind of deal.
Well, if I may, I can't speak for those two projects because I didn't look those up before I came in, but if you want to get with me later, I can look those up directly. And then if you wanted to spend some time with us, we can walk you through the process. You can see how easy or difficult it may be.
Okay, I'll come do another workday over there.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Got it? Just a couple of questions. The top fee for like a fence repair or something along those lines is $35, but there's some other stuff on top of that, so it's going to be about 75 bucks.
So by reducing these fees, like if you look at this, the fee structure, the $35 permits, that's the permit fee, which includes inspections. It doesn't include the plan review, or if planning has to look at it, or if engineering has to look at it, if it's commercial, fire has to look at it. So there's a multiple places these may go. So this is just reducing one of the fees?
That was my question. It just reduces the permit fee.
Yes.
Okay. And I had another question, but I got involved with the gelato thing, so I forgot what it It wasn't anything pressing. I'll think about it later, and I'll send you.
You know how to find me.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for doing this. I hope, like you said, I hope that it keeps us busy down there.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I move to approve resolution number 2302.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is item number 28.
I would like to be considered for best mask tonight. It's UCF.
I have a new vote.
It's UCF, and if any of you saw the UCF Boise State game, pulled out a win.
Mr. Hatton, you just lost.
Did they play football this week?
Okay, okay, I'm just putting it out there. Okay, it's getting late. We'll talk later.
We'll talk later.
I can give you all the updates. Go Knights.
Go Knights.
Can I get a charge on? Okay, there we go. Well, I am pleased to be before you this evening to bring our International Association of Firefighters three-year agreement beginning October 1, 2021. This agreement is a product of a lot of partnership and collaboration between the IFF and the city of Largo. What we've done and attained in there is a competitive wage, a process that maintains a range pay plan, continues with benchmarks to allow that predictability that we need to be competitive, and it includes in there a 5% annual increase for three years of the agreement, which is identical to PBA, which keeps us competitive. I'm sorry, I was kind of breathing it in. It keeps us competitive with our regional players, and, which is very, very important for us to attain our vision of being the community of choice in Tampa Bay, especially for our public safety personnel and as a city organization. Additionally, in this agreement, we've got the four weeks of parental leave. Veterans Day is included in there. We included eight hours of additional bereavement leave that our HPO committee did recommend. Additionally, we have 95% core coverage for employee health insurance, which is something we were doing citywide. We also were able to attain together, making our sick leave benefits more in line with the rest of the city. That is, to have a 900-hour maximum, which is five-fourths of what the rest of the city gets. Previous to that, it was 2,016 hours, which is very excessive and very limited with anyone over 900 hours. We had four employees out of about 130-plus with any type of balance over 900 hours. So we're partnering with those four people to ensure they're taken care of. Additionally, our accrual, our sick leave accrual went down but still remains competitive with the rest of our neighbors and our regional players. With that, I'm here to answer any, oh, I'm here to answer any questions, but I would love to introduce tonight, we have our district vice president, Kyle Leitheiser, with us this evening, who was a chief negotiator on the IFF side, and if you would want to come up and say a few words, I think.
I have a card on this as well.
Oh, excellent. Very good. Officially.
We'll give you three minutes.
Be official.
It's on the up and down.
Excellent.
No, I'll be quick. It's obviously been a long night for everybody, but, so, good evening for those watching. Kyle Leitheiser, district vice president of IFF 4966, the local here. So I'm here tonight just to say that I, obviously, we're in support of ratifying this contract, the collective bargaining agreement. And also just to say, you know, I wanted to thank Mrs. Sins, Mr. Schubert, Fire Chief Pittman, Fire Chief Carpenter, who are all involved in this as well. So this has been a collaborative effort. We had many of us from the union side, you know, putting our brains together, along with the city, and we came to an extremely quick agreement. This was, I've been here 14 years, and we sat down, I think, three total times, and we were done. And that doesn't happen without a good collaborative environment, without good people, and without, you know, honesty and trust. So, and so we have it to the city, and I know the city has it with us. So, thank you very much. This is really going to help the firefighters remain competitive, allow you guys to retain great services, right? We want to provide those superior services. We'll continue to do so. Excuse me, I'm getting dry. Anyway, thank you very much, Mrs. Sins. Thank you all for having me here. I just wanted to let you all know how great this is going to be, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, too.
Absolutely.
Commissioner, any other cards on that?
No, that was the other card.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yep, I just wanted to kind of expand on Kyle's comments, you know, great job by Susan, by you and your team. Kyle, great job by you and your team. And, you know, it's not often that this type of agreement comes together so quick. So I think it's just a great show of collaboration. So, and then lastly, congratulations to Kyle Leitheiser, who is now the new district chief here at the city of Largo. Very much well deserved, and, you know, I think we're all happy that we were able to work with you over the last few years in your role with the IFF. And hopefully whoever takes your, fills, tries to fill your shoes, you know, can work as well as with the team as you have in that. So, thank you.
Thank you. That district chief thing was my question, so thanks.
Yeah, mine too. Why, I canceled.
Mr. Gerard?
No, I canceled because I wanted to congratulate Kyle on his promotion. Great job. I spent a 12-hour shift, not just a few hours, a few weeks ago, riding with Kyle, and it's a real education. And as I often say, anybody who hasn't done ride along with fire rescue or with the police really should. It's a real education of the work and the constant, constant work that goes on. These guys don't sit around. They're always on the move. So congratulations, Kyle.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the Pinellas County Professional Firefighters IAFF Local 4966 for a three-year term beginning October 1, 2021.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Good job.
Go Knights. Item number 29.
What are those? What are they? Good evening. I just wanted to start by saying Chris and I did not know there was a mask contest tonight, so we'll make sure to bring it next meeting.
We'll see you next week.
Ordinance 2021-68 is a first reading for the annexation of one property located on the south side of 142nd Avenue North, on the east side of US Highway 19 North, west of 62nd Street North, and north of Olmerton Road. The property will add an additional 5.78 acres to the municipal boundary and has a land use of commercial general. The taxable value of the property is currently a little over $456,000 and is vacant as well. However, once annexed into the city, it will be developed into multifamily apartments. Incentives provided through the annexation agreement include access to our sanitary sewer at in-city rates, ability to use Pinellas County design standards in their site plan if they choose, and $15,000 that can be used for the development of the property. The money can be used towards the following items incurred within five years of the effective date of the annexation of the property if approved: building and engineering permit fees, site plan review fees, and certificate of occupancy fees, drainage improvements, and landscaping and signage requirements. All requirements as specified in Chapter 171 of the state statutes have been met except for the advertisements, which will be published before the public hearing, specifically on September 15 and September 22. The property is contiguous to the city's municipal boundaries through previous annexations and together helps to reduce the size of existing enclaves. The ordinance proposes to annex property that is compact, as that term is defined in Chapter 171. Therefore, it is staff's opinion that the property may be annexed voluntarily in accordance with Chapter 171. The Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners and Pinellas County Planning have been noticed and did not provide any objections. All city departments review this annexation and indicated services can be provided to the property. Staff is available for questions at this time.
Ordinance number 2021-68, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida.
Ordinance number 2021-68, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, annexing the within-described tract of land located on the south side of 142nd Avenue North, on the east side of US Highway 19 North, west of 62nd Street North, and north of Olmerton Road, Pinellas County, Florida, and contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Largo, Florida, with city land use designation of commercial general, redefining the corporate boundary of the city of Largo to include said addition according to the provisions of Chapter 171 Florida statutes, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions? Commissioner Smith.
Just out of curiosity, and just me picking, and I should have asked earlier, when it says the ability to use Pinellas County design standards, site plan if they choose, what's wrong with our plans? I mean, I'm just curious, is it something they have better or?
So our code is very competitive sometimes, however, Pinellas County may have more favorable setbacks that they may choose to use. I know in this development, I think, and the consultant is here, if there's any questions, I believe that they are choosing to use our standards for the development.
Okay. I was just curious. I wanted to learn something new, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard.
I'm excited to see this property coming in the city. I'm really excited about the development that's being planned, and I know it's very, very early in the process and it may be unfair, but have there been any discussion about having an affordable housing complex, or component?
Sure. So I was actually speaking with that earlier today with the, one of the investors about the possibility of that. I do need to speak with planning staff because I do believe that our code does not allow for it, since it's already at commercial general. And so that is the highest and best land use for that. So I don't think it's a possibility for this site, but still in the works.
So it doesn't allow for a density bonus based on affordable housing? That's what you're referring to?
Correct.
Okay. But it wouldn't disallow affordable housing?
Right.
If they chose to, you know, to do it on their own, yes.
Right. Good question.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-68 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on October 5, 2021.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 30.
Good evening. This is ordinance number 2021-72, first reading, amending fees for the library department. The Pinellas Public Library Cooperative Libraries will be implementing a fine-free policy as of October 1st, 2021. This change will result in no accrual of fines for library cardholder accounts for returning materials past the due date. Patrons will continue to receive overdue notices and be responsible for lost or damaged items charged to their account. A presentation about the PPLC fine-free policy was made by library staff at the Largo City Commission Work Session on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. At that time, there was a consensus to support the initiative. The removal of this barrier to service to libraries, to service in libraries at the state and national level has increased service to marginalized populations and enabled libraries to be more inclusive. The change in policy will align with the library, align the library with the City of Largo Strategic Plan Initiative, foster community opportunities exist for residents and businesses to realize their full potential. To facilitate this change, library administration proposes removing the code of ordinances, appendix B, fee schedule, section six, library department, D section, fines, library materials in general per day, 20 cents, interlibrary loan, special collection materials per day, 20 cents, DVD, Blu-ray, video games per item per day, 50 cents, kits, $2, and a maximum fine per item, $5. I'm here to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2021-72, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, amending section six of ordinance number 20032 as amended to repeal section six D, providing for fines for library materials, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Commissioner Smith.
This one touches my heart. I just want to say, what staff presented to us at that meeting was a great presentation to those that say people don't, won't return things. We have found in other locations from what was being presented, it actually does get people, they start holding on, they've held on to things and they're afraid to bring it back. So they start, they bring it back, and I, it does change. And also with staff, I would tell you, as someone who's on the front line of having to deny someone reading material because they have late fees is really hard to me, because that's the biggest thing. As a kid with dyslexia, having, and having difficulty reading, the library was the greatest place to go to and try to read Harold and the Purple Crayon, his Purple Crayon. I think I missaid that one. But the other part of example today, and this is also, is I had a young 11-year-old, I believe it was, who came in today and couldn't check out a book because they, she returned everything, her family got it returned, but because of the late fee that comes along with the $5 and it racks up, and her family was in transition times and stuff that, like that, prime example is telling someone, I can't give you a book because you owe $140, is really tough. And trying to figure out the situation that our staff, and they do an awesome job having to navigate and try to figure out ways to get, you know, someone a library card. And so I applaud our library, our library staff and libraries around that are going this way, and thinking about different communities and trying to get more people to be excited with the library, because it's the greatest joy. And then, September is library card month, so please, please, please come get a library card. With that is, it brings the world, like I said, a kid who has dyslexia who couldn't read a book, who ended up working in a library, is the greatest thing. And sits up here, who is not a great public speaker, but this is a great thing, and I thank our library staff and all librarians around. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Robinson.
Thank you. I fully support this, you know, this movement, I guess, you know, I think it's, this obviously happened nationwide in a lot of different areas. So, just a couple real quick questions. Does, and this was probably answered in our work session, but I don't remember. Does this take care of anybody who has a current fine as well? Are they going to go away as well?
Yes, the PPLC library directors did.
Asking for a friend. No, I'm just kidding.
The PPLC library directors did vote to have all current fines vacated from the accounts. That'll happen like September 30th or something, yeah.
All right, so, that's perfect. So, and then this will be implemented in Largo if this passes on the 1st of October?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll see you on October 2nd.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
I just put it in a little bit of historical perspective here, and I think Henry would back me up on this. This is how far we've come. There was a time when we had police officers calling people off of a roster that, you know, had overdue books and fines due. So we've come a long way. Great job, Jerry.
Back for one, I'm glad we don't do that anymore.
Yeah, me too. I bet the cops start too.
Commissioner Gerard.
Thank you. So the PPLC is, notice how I use that acronym, by the way, is implementing this, so I would understand that all the libraries in the county are doing this.
Correct.
And I think that's wonderful. I do have a question. If a person has overdue books or materials, would they still be allowed to check out new materials while they still have the overdue materials?
They are still working out how that timeline will be, the time period of when an item will go to the lost status, and at that time, the price of the item is attached to the account. That will be shortened considerably. The directors will be deciding that next week. As far as the timeline, there'll be more and more frequent notices, and then the timeline for when an item goes to that lost status will be quicker than it used to be. I think it was 45 days now, so that they will, their account will be blocked quicker if they don't return the materials. But then, as soon as they return the materials, there will be no fines.
Okay, and I should have phrased my question better. So, in my household, we habitually keep our books past the due date, but we check out six or eight or 10 books at a time and just to plow through them. If they're late, and I've got a book that was on hold, but it came in, and I have my late books at home, and I come in to pick up the book that finally came in the library, they're going, am I going to be told, well, you've got to return the ones that you got already?
Probably, yes. If they've reached the status of the lost status, then yes, you would have to return them.
But if they're just simply overdue by, you know, seven days?
I don't know the timeline, but yes, if they're just simply overdue, you can still check out materials, and you can still have access to the eresources. Once they've gone to that lost status, then they would, you would have to return the items, and then you could check out materials.
Thanks very much. And I want to say once again that we have the best library in the Tampa Bay area.
I think what Jerry's trying to say is you need to be a little more diligent about getting your stuff.
No.
No, not diligent, a little more responsible, maybe, but, or read faster.
Everybody's lost a book before.
No. Thank you.
I think that Pinellas Park has some good library employees.
They do.
They have some.
One or two.
But our library's the best.
I, I'm not sure if I asked for public comment, so in case I didn't, do we have any public?
No, we don't have any cards.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-72 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on October 5th, 2021.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next, we have ordinance number 2022-01.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to put this photo up, just this aerial, so you can see what we're looking at is the northwest parking lot of the Pinellas County School Board property located on 2nd Avenue Southwest and 4th Street. This item is the first reading for ordinance 2022-01 for the vacation of a 16-foot-wide north-south alley and a 16-foot-wide east-west alley located in the northwest parking lot of the Pinellas County School Board property at 137 2nd Avenue Southwest. The property owner, school board of Pinellas County, has requested that the city approve the vacation of these alleyways that do not function as public rights-of-way. The north-south alley right-of-way contains a Largo sanitary sewer main, and I don't know if it stands out well enough, but this is the alley, the outline of the alley that has a, one of our sanitary sewer mains in it. And the school board has approved an easement agreement with the city for the continued maintenance of this sewer main. The easement agreement will be scheduled for city commission approval, along with the second reading of this ordinance on October 5th, 2021, should this first reading move forward to second reading. The proposed vacation of rights-of-way meets the appropriate standards of the city comprehensive development code, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Ordinance number 2022-01, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, vacating the rights-of-way of a 16-foot-wide north-south alley and a 16-foot-wide east-west alley, both adjacent to 137 2nd Avenue Southwest, Largo, Florida, within section 34, Township 29 South, Range 15 East, Pinellas County, Florida, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
I have a question about the, just to the east of the east-west alley, there's, basically, it's kind of a roadway, but it goes through their parking lot. Is there an easement there as well?
Hmm. An easement?
So it's, you know.
You're talking about just like down, this drive aisle?
No, no, no. From, so, see the star at the top, the top of the map?
Yeah.
Keep going up. So if you come down, this is 6th, that comes into the school board parking lot, and then it essentially is a driveway through the school board parking lot, and then you're back on 6th Avenue?
At 3rd.
Hmm. I'm not sure about that. I can certainly get that information to you.
Okay, I was, I was curious. When I heard that this easement was coming to us, I really pictured that as the easement that needed to be vacated. I guess I wasn't aware that this easement also existed. I mean, this easement's underneath a building, so we're probably not going to ever use it. That's the only question I had, whether or not there is an easement there.
I was under this, that was the exact same thought when I first read this, is exactly what I thought as well.
Yeah. And then I looked at the map.
Yeah.
Was thrown off. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2022-01 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on October 5th, 2021.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. That one was easier than the last one for you. If you could just send an email out as far as that roadway, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, Anne?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to apologize to you and just let you know that during agenda item number 25, I was not directing my frustration at you and what was presented here. It was the overall conversation that I got frustrated with, but I just want you to know that you always do an excellent presentation, and I just wanted to apologize and let you know that that was not, my frustration was not directed at you, okay?
I didn't get that impression at all. No apology is ever needed, so, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Next up, Mr. Zimmatt, do you have anything this evening?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
Yeah, I'm going to bring something up, even though it's been a long night, and I just wondered, perhaps, so this doesn't keep coming back before us and in silence. Is there any, or perhaps the mayor could ask if there's any consensus among this commission or by this commission to initiate any sort of investigation on the departure of Director Byrne, former Director Byrne? Because if we just don't give some sort of an answer, I think it's just going to keep coming back. And if there is an appetite for that, then we should say so, and if there isn't, I think we should say so as well. And I'm not coming down on either side of that equation, but if it's possible, I'd like to sort of put that to rest.
Sure, we can, I think we can discuss it a little bit now, if there's, if there's any discussion to have. I think some of what's being presented to us is not necessarily correct. Mr. Schubert and I, and I know that Mr. Schubert meets with all of us, and we spoke at some length, not just before he, before Ms. Byrne left, but sometimes before that about some challenges, some challenges, and when, when he told me what was going to happen, it was pretty clear that the reason, from my perspective, and it didn't necessarily have to do with job performance. As we all know, our Recreation Parks Department is, does great things. And, but, but there was, it was made pretty clear to me. I didn't have any questions. I wasn't in need of any more information personally. I don't know if y'all had the same information that I did. As I said, it's not a, this isn't a decision that we make as a commission. It's the city management's decision. And I was comfortable, I don't think that any, I don't think that Mr. Schubert would make a decision, a personnel decision, that, I mean, he, I don't think he would make that type of a personnel decision without discussing that with all of us, which he did, I think. So, so I don't think that there's anything to investigate. I'm.
If I may, since I brought it up, it's, that's how I feel. I think it's within his authority to make such decisions, and we all meet with Mr. Schubert, or talk, speak with him at least once a week. But when we sit here in silence, then the public gets one side of a story and perhaps a different perspective. And maybe this isn't appropriate tonight at the end of a meeting, but I just thought, so we don't, you know, I don't like anyone implying that we're somehow derelict in our duty, that we're not launching an investigation just because there's a request, and so forth. And so, in my opinion, the matter's closed, but if there's other opinions, that's. closed, but if there's, if there's other opinions, that's fine, too.
I would like to echo both of the comments that were just made, I, I felt, at the time of the incident, I felt perfectly comfortable in the decision that was made by Mr. Schubert. I also had a lot of conversations with him leading up to that, that, and, and, apparently, unbeknownst to me, but might have been very similar to some of the conversations that the mayor had with, with Mr. Schubert, from, from what it sounds like up here, so, yeah, I'm, I, I appreciate John bringing this up, I, I think you're right, you know, there's obviously some, some animosity towards the decision and, and there, you know, but it does deserve an answer, I think you're, so I'm, but, you know, again, perfectly comfortable with the decision that was made, it's not our decision to make, and, but, you know, anybody's obviously has the right to come here and ask that we open an investigation into that, I don't feel that there, anything like that needs to happen.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to concur with everything that's been said, I, I'm very comfortable with Henry's decision, and I see no need whatsoever to open up some kind of an investigation based on innuendo, I just don't see it, and I'm, and I'm very happy to hear other members of this commission say the same thing, I think we're all on board with that, well, at least the four who've spoken so far.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith?
And I would agree, thank you Commissioner Carroll for bringing that up, because it did feel kind of awkward, and, and having him, Mr. Byrne come every time, it was kind of that difficult, where do you interject yourself into the someone who's present, you know, giving their three minutes, so, and, and on top of that, we did just get an email from him, and I was not responding to my emails due to, to that subject, because I, after, when I said that I, I felt we could have done it a different, it could have been handled a different way, I realized that I had missed a meeting with Mr. Schubert that was a clear-up of where my, what was being presented, so I met with him and Assistant City Manager, and, and, and I'm more, I'm very confident in the decision of what Mr. Schubert made on this, and I agree, Mr. Schubert would not make a decision like this without consulting us all. I, I respect, I, I, the other part of, is, how do I clear, I'm trying to say it in a nice way, I'm really ticked a little bit, a, a couple of the emails that I've gotten attacking our Assistant City Manager in the way that has been there and being presented up there, that was completely uncalled for, and I, I think what, when we hired Maggie, I thought we did a hell of a job there, and, and, and to attack someone's reputation and, and say that something happened in another city, and, and that's happening here, I do not think it is, after speaking and also consulting with other members of the city staff on their interactions and meetings and stuff like that, that had also kind of came about this, so I, I'm a hundred percent confident in this, and I do not look for an investigation at all.
Thank you, Commissioner Finger?
Thank you, I agree with everyone's comments thus far, and on a, on a process side, I'd spoken with City Manager Schubert, and I had previously asked City Attorney Zimmert about how this, the investigation process works, and I, if we are all leaning towards not needing an investigation, then, you know, we, obviously, we, we don't support that, but if we did go through that, what, what I've learned about that is that if, if that report came back and didn't find anything wrong with the decision that was made, we would, and, we would end up with a lot of information out there, a lot of personal, a lot more personal information to the employee, former employee, that I don't think is fair or necessary to have out there, to, out of respect, and also, we would be people who would have to make the decision on the entire investigation, whether we, at that point, if we really do think there was something wrong, so, and it would cost us money, so if we're, I guess to sum it up, if we're in this place of we don't see the need for one, and I know people are emailing us and asking us for that, I think it's important to know also, though, how that process works, so that we're eval, you know, they know we're evaluating it from the perspective of, in addition to costs, if we're not seeing anything, and as well, like I said, a report that could be harmful to, or embarrassing to someone, and then also, it still comes back to us, so, I, I agree with everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holt?
Um, yes, I just want to say that I, I don't feel like I was as informed about the problems with Joan, I, I can recall one instance that Henry and I spoke with regarding the situation with her, so I, I was kind of taken back when, when it did happen, but I do, I do support, he's our city manager, I support him, he's done, you know, he's, he's done a great job for our city, it is not up to us who is hired and fired, we all know that coming in, and this was a decision that he made, and, and I support him in it, and I stand with the commission as far as they're not needing to be a inquiry, and hopefully that will put a, a stop to some of the unnecessary emails, we, you know, we, we understand the point, we get it, and, and she was a, a great asset to the city for a long time, and like I, I said to her, she, she should be proud, because everywhere you look in the city of Largo, you see Joan Barnes, and we're very lucky to have her, but this is, we're at a turning point now, and this is where we're at, so, thank you.
Also, thank you.
Well, Mayor, thank you for allowing me that, and I, again, I know it's been a long meeting, I apologize for putting it at the end of a long meeting, but I just, for my, for me personally, I wanted some kind of closure, if there was no appetite to proceed, I think we can just end that discussion, and, you know, I'm sure that there will be hurt feelings all over, in some places, but, you know, for the commission, I think, I'm done with it.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
I appreciate, thank you for bringing it up.
And I'll tell you, early, early on, I, I reached out to, you know, I, I grew up in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, so, so I'm friends with several people that didn't really understand where it was coming from, so I had some long conversations, and, I don't know that I changed any minds on their perspective, and I, that wasn't really the intent, but, but, um, then, you know, that's, that's what I did to, to reach out to explain a little bit about the motivation that Mr. Schubert explained to me behind this, this change, and that's what it is, it's a change, and, and, you know, I think that, I think that they, by and large, understood that, and, and whether or not I entirely agree with Mr. Schubert, with things that he does, with all the things that he does, it's not, it's not my business as a commission to get into the management of a city, that's why we have a city, that's why we're the type of government that we are, we don't get paid enough to do that, so, so I appreciate, I appreciate, you know, one of the things when Mr. Schubert was hired as city manager, that I wanted to see was some change, some, some willingness to do things differently than we always have, and, and frankly, I've been pleasantly surprised, and, and so, you know, some of the decisions that, that he makes as a manager are probably a little bit different than I would do, but, but I support him in those efforts, because I, I think that he's, he's well-intentioned in his, in what he does, and, and he's got my support, so, and that was part of your thing, anything else?
That was it, but thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
Just again, the, it's, it's Library Card Month, please stop by the Largo Library and, or any library in Pinellas County, more Largo Library I'd like.
More Pinellas.
Or come see me at Pinellas Park, I'd like that, too.
Or if you get lost.
And get a library card, i- it, it's, path of knowledge is there, and it's so cool, and it's not just books there, they, they have audiobooks, movies, I mean, brand-new TV series, and I, I don't like to push that, but, brand-new TV series that come out, and, you can take out fifty items, and you get some of the kids that come in and get a library card, and we, I, I've been at mine for, going on fifteen years, and kids coming back and saying, I remember you giving me my first library book, so, please come out, and, and to me, that is so cool, so come get a library card, and, and not only that, they have online services that are there, ancestry.com, our library has a great genealogy department, also, the thing that they, they just revised since COVID is the checking out museum passes, you can check out a museum pass, just all these different libraries, I mean, museums, from the Henry Plant all the way down to the Imagine Museum down in St. Pete, even the new James Western one down in St. Pete, you can get a library card and take two adults and three children to most of these libraries, and you get it for a week, and that is such a cool thing to be able to, to, to do that through our library system, so please, 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 come get a library card, see us, our library staff would love to, 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 to help you out, but books are a, a cool way to knowledge. Second is, uh, this coming Saturday is Largo Sustainability Series, it's gonna be on Facebook, it's, starts at ten-thirty on Facebook, we're gonna put it on there, and it's from our, our partners at the High, High Point Neighborhood Family Center, and they're gonna be exploring, exploring their garden, food can processing, and learning about their connect, connecting to Largo, uh, local farming. It's, it is cool to watch some of these things, I mean, things that I would have never been able to get out to, uh, having them online and, and partnering with neighbors, like the High, High Point Center is, is such a cool thing, and, and learning how to be more diligent and sustainable in your, your community is such a cool thing, so that, again, it's this Saturday on our Largo Facebook page, starting at ten-thirty, and I really thank our High Point Neighborhood Family Center for stepping up on that one, and also, remember the family members and, and those who lost their lives on this twentieth anniversary of nine-eleven, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger?
Thank you, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to attend virtually this evening, and that's all, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here. Commissioner Gerard?
Thank you, first of all, I believe that perhaps I owe the commission an apology for letting my emotions get the better of me during the discussion of Item Twenty-five, sometimes when I feel strongly about things, it, it gets away from me, I want to apologize if anybody was offended by what I was saying, although I believe what I was saying, but I should have said it better. Want to congratulate Kyle Lighthizer again for his promotion to District Chief, he's, he's an outstanding example of, of the quality of our fire rescue, and I'm really glad to see him receive that. I attended the Largo Historical Society Open House this past weekend, and if, and, you know, and I would recommend and suggest that anybody who would like to know a little bit about where Largo came from, get over to the old Feed Store and take a look, because the history is there, the examples are there, it's a great little museum, and I'm looking forward to, to its expansion in the future. One other, one other item, I, I've been reading reports about, about the effects of COVID on insurance policies of the other major insurers, everything from increased premiums for non-vaccinated people to insurance companies, you know, or reducing their, their coverage for folks who are hospitalized with COVID, who are not vaccinated, which could have a serious impact on, you know, on people's, people's savings, I'm wondering if any, if any feedback has come back to the city about our self-insurance program, I'd like to know that we're in good standing and that our employees are safe, and, and, and just to repeat what was said earlier in the meeting during Citizen Common, I'd like to know a little bit more about what's going on over by Behead and Second Avenue Southwest, so, and my support for Maggie Pollock, whom I think is an outstanding Assistant City Manager, and I hope that we can put to rest this innuendo that's being aimed at her, which is entirely unfair, unfounded, and untrue, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yep, real, just a couple things here, first of all, Carson King, who's sitting out in the audience, our legislative aide, is the alternate member of the, was voted to be an alternate member of the twenty-twenty-one Personnel Advisory Board, so congratulations to him. Just wanted to say again, congratulations Anastasia, who was here earlier, I mean, I, that was really, that was really a cool moment for me, and, to be able to, you know, I mean, hold a, a gold medal and, and to meet somebody who's the best in the world at, at what they do, I mean.
Probably won't happen again, Jamie.
What's that?
Probably won't happen again.
And it will never happen again, I can, yeah, yeah, absolutely, so, that was a really cool moment for me personally, and, I mean, obviously, you know, having her from Largo and representing Largo so well is just awesome, so, one, or two other things, real quick, the, as the, as a liaison to the Planning Board, we had the meeting about the Eighth Avenue Project the other day, the eight-hundred Eighth Avenue Project, the approval of the development agreement, as well as the future land use map change, I just wanted to say thank you to our staff, there was about sixty people here, residents, that came to speak about, not all of them spoke, but there was a lot of people here, it was literally all hands-on deck from the Community Development Department, I think there were probably fifteen or twenty members of staff here, that all did a fantastic job, kind of getting everybody in, obviously, we're limited amount of people we had in here, so we were, you know, kind of shuffling them back and forth from the community, from the community room, I also wanted, so they did a fantastic job with that, I just wanted, you know, not to get into the, to the discussion of the meeting, because obviously, we'll be having that soon enough, but, the, that, the Community Development Staff has put out this one-pager, I'll be happy to pass it around, or if, if anybody wants to take a look at it, on the, the plan and what the project looks like, as far as how it works through the city, and, you know, it has the list of the upcoming meetings from Largo for the county, it has a, a section on how to participate in the meetings, if you want to do it by email, through Zoom or in-person, and there's a little QR code on there, you can go and get signed up for an email that will continually update you about the project, I can't tell you how much I appreciate this from our staff, because that is exactly what all of us have been asking up here for a long time to happen, is, you know, obviously, emotions get high when we start talking about things, you know, projects that happen in, in people's backyards, this is exactly, you know, and maybe we don't ever, you know, get those, those, those things corrected, or, you know, maybe that, there's still some misunderstanding about the project, but at the, we are doing everything we can to get all that information out, so I, I just wanted, I told Henry that this morning, just wanted to say out loud, you know, thank you to our staff for putting that out there, that is fantastic job, and, you know, I signed up for the emails, so I can get those whenever they come out, I just think it's a really cool thing that we're doing, and lastly, in case anybody else wants to go to another meeting this week, the Pinellas Legislative Delegative, Delegation will be meeting Thursday at the Seminole Campus for SPC in the Digitatorium from nine to twelve, I'll be speaking on behalf of the Suncoast League, so, yeah, you know, another meeting, everybody enjoys those, so.
It's on my calendar.
It's, it's, yep, we'll be there, so, that's all I have for today, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it possible to get that, that one-pager email to the rest of the commission, because I haven't seen that?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Commissioner Holt?
I just want to congratulate Kyle Lighthizer also, and Anastasia, it was great having you here, and I think everybody's pretty much covered everything else for the evening, thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted to ask, I think Commissioner Gerard mentioned this, the Second Avenue darks, picnic tables being removed, I, I mean, I hate to see us remove picnic tables, because homeless people are using them, we could probably do something else to discourage folks that maybe are doing, yeah, I mean, we don't want to reduce the quality of our parks, because they're not being used correctly. because they're not being used correctly. So, I hope we're all on the same page there. And then I think we could also take a look at Northwest Park as far as, and I don't know what the answer is, whether it's some lighting in there. But, but take a look at sprucing up Northwest Park and, and maybe take a look at pedestrian access on 16th as well, if we have any plans for a sidewalk along there. I got one other request. Somebody at the tennis courts over at Highland said earlier today, there was a, there was somebody in, there was a, somebody experiencing homelessness in the bathroom for about three hours. So, and the question was, do we, do we monitor that? Are they locked? Or what, you know, what should that parent do? That's over at the playground that comes over to use the restroom and there's somebody camped out in the bathroom. So if you can get to that in a second. And lastly, oh, and, and thank you for stopping by. Thank you Carson for putting the reminder out and thank you for stopping by the Historical Society. I, I went by there after Little League practice with Wildland, who's a history buff anyways, so we were in there for a long time. We spent about, about 45 minutes being showed around by Ted Signor and, and Don Forehand, who are like walking history of Largo. We learned about the stuff that they used to do when they were kids. So, I, I told them they had to tone it down a little bit because my 12-year-old was standing right next to me. But, but, but they, they know a lot about the history of this and, and it's, it's really fun to go in there and listen and just chat with those guys. And lastly, today is, it's the seventh, which is my wife's birthday. So I wanted to wish her a happy birthday. I'm sure that on her birthday, she's home watching this.
Yeah.
So I wanted to wish her a happy birthday. I'll be celebrating all week because today was not exactly a great day for me to celebrate her birthday, so.
Should we sing "Happy Birthday"?
Happy Birthday, Jenny.
No, no, please don't. Mr. Schubert?
Yeah, let me just make a couple of very quick comments about the recent personnel action. Contrary to some of the comments that have been made to the City Commission, that was not the decision of the Assistant City Manager. It was solely my decision as the city manager. And secondly, I very much appreciate all your support this evening.
Thank you. Any action items?
Yes. I have a request by Commissioner Smith for statistics on officers visiting pet stores in the city. A request by Commissioner Gerard for feedback on the city's health insurance and compliance with COVID? Is that? Request by Commissioner Gerard, Mayor Brown for information on streetlight situation on Second Avenue Southwest, along with the removal of picnic benches. A request. Oh shit, oh, okay. Request by Commissioner Gerard that the City Commission received by email copies of the Eighth Avenue Project meeting schedule that was distributed. A request by Mayor Brown for staff to look at sprucing up Northwest Park and possible pedestrian access from 16th Avenue. And a request by Mayor Brown for information on how park bathrooms are monitored by staff.
Yeah, and what parents should do if they.
What parents?
Maybe my, take a look at that situation. Maybe it might make sense to, to have a, a police non-emergency line or something like that. Some direction what parents can do when they're put in that situation where their kid, they don't want to send their kid in the bathroom because there's somebody sleeping in there.
Yeah, we'll look into that for sure.
Thank you so much. Anything else? Meeting's adjourned.